Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for April 29, 2014. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Decision items. Item number one, 5-28BZ, 664 New York Avenue, Brooklyn.
Good thing you have the speaker outside. Good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number two, 19705BZ, 813-815 Broadway, Manhattan. The law offices of Marvin B. Mitzner.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner, is Marvin Mitzner the applicant?
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, 24709BZ, 123 East 55th Street, Manhattan.
All right, we'll reopen the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ottley Brown?
Aye.
Thank you. When is that scheduled for?
It's right now. Actually, we're having the hearing right now. Are there speakers on this item?
Yes.
Good morning. Stephanie Marazzi from the law firm Slater &amp; Beckerman. We represent the owner of Tower 56, which is the commercial tower to the north of the community house on the same zoning lot. Tower 56 has not yet granted the owner authorization required for the application. We were recently retained, so we would request a two-week continuance of the hearing to confer with our client and discuss with Central Synagogue any issues our client might have.
You realize that this application is not really the variance application. It's an extension of time to complete construction?
Yes.
And at the last, at the variance application, actually, your client provided authorization?
Yes. I understand.
All right. Are there any other speakers on this item? I'm not sure if there's reason to continue the hearing, but we can give you two weeks to submit papers into the record?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Siliman, do you want to add anything to the record?
I just want to say, we have no objection to granting that request to allow them to understand the prior history here. It's the same owner they consented previously. And the variance your board granted was contemplated in the original Zelda when we transferred 50,000 square feet to them. And we built exactly what the two-story addition that was allowed in that Zelda. The reason we were at your board for the variance is that there was a downzoning that deprived us of the floor area. So we want to cooperate with them to clear this up.
All right. So what we can do is we can give you two weeks. So that's May 13. And if there are any issues, Mr. Siliman, you can respond back on May 20. We'll put this tentative decision date for June 10. We understand if there are issues that have not been resolved by then, then we can consider reopening. Take a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Continued hearings. Item number four, calendar number 14292BZ, 473 through 541 Sixth Street, Brooklyn. Kramer Levin of Talus &amp; Frankel.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. As you know, this is a companion application to the variance application for Methodist Hospital. We made a submission last week to conform this application to the modifications that were made to the variance application. And actually, yesterday, by email, and we submitted a chart showing the summary of required and permitted parking on the zoning lot as requested by the commissioner at yesterday's review session. So we're available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Montanez, did you have a chance to look at the chart?
Yes, I did. And just in terms of the proposed, that was what you originally proposed before you went to the community board?
The proposed fall 2013 is exactly. That was the original proposal. And as you can see, then where it says current variance and SOC applications, that was the reduction that was requested by the community board and that resulted in this SOC application to allow us to put some of the required parking in the existing garage.
And the community board requested the reduction because they felt there was an excess of permitted spaces?
I believe they felt there was an excess, there would be an excess of parking on the zoning lot in the garage, and they felt that a reduction was appropriate. And that was what we did in response to that request of the community board.
Okay. And it complies with your traffic analysis in terms of...
The parking demand is well under the number of spaces that will be provided on the zoning lot.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Smagner? Are there any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right. If there are no speakers, then we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
We'll set the decision date for May 20.
Item number five, calendar number 18696BZ, 14521 through 25 Liberty Avenue, Queens, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good morning, Adam Rothberg. I know the board did have some discussion at the executive session.
Yes.
I would just say with regard to the term, certainly, we want as many years as possible. It's a rental property, and it makes it more attractive. This owner did purchase after the original variance. They were not the applicant. They're not experienced real estate owners. And they did pay a substantial penalty on the filing fee for refiling at such a late date. So, of course, we'll leave it to the board's discretion, but as long a grant as the board seems fit would be appreciated.
Okay. I just wanted to point out, I think, the certificate of occupancy, which probably your client must have seen before they bought the property, does clearly say the expiration date.
Absolutely.
So I understand that things get put aside, but they must have been...
I just want to point out, it is a difference between an applicant who is actually involved in the hearings and got a term. But again, that's the board's discretion. And again, under the new filing fee schedule, there are substantial penalties for the late filing. So we would like the board to take that into consideration.
Okay, we will. Commissioner Montanez?
I think it was something that was brought up at the last hearing, that it appears that you have excess signage, and you were going to do a signage analysis.
The, we're proposing to replace all of the signage after the grant, so the proposed plans show compliance with C1, and that's what's being proposed. We would like to have the grant and the extension. And then we are proposing to do new signage, along with the plans show we have to add a new egress door to one of the buildings. So again, we will be doing that work after the grant, and we are proposing to limit the signage to C1.
Did you give us a copy of those? Those were the plans you gave us in the original hearing?
Yeah, those, yes. Those plans show an additional, show an additional door.
And the signage?
The signage is all going to be replaced.
Right. And it is based on how much per...
C1 is what we're proposing.
So it's 44 square feet per establishment?
I think one is a... I thought we did give a sign analysis in the February 18 submission. So I think one lot is a corner lot.
Can't you bring your signage into compliance now? And I say that because you have three tenants, and they're going to continue to be the same three tenants. I don't know what incentive there is for you to pursue making these changes quickly.
Well, the incentive will be getting a new CFO. So we'll have to demonstrate to the Department of Buildings that we comply with C1. And as I said, since we are adding a door, it's more than just filing for new CFOs for the building. There will actually be, have to be a work application that's filed.
Right. And it'll take more time. I think experience has shown us that if we give you six months, you may come back in six months and ask for more time. So can you look at removing the signage, at least, even if you're going to change overall?
Yeah, I understand.
Then at least bring the signage down to what is complying.
Okay.
Okay. So why don't you do that? Are there other questions? Any other speakers on this item? No other speakers. We can continue the hearing. Shall we give you a month?
I would say, I would say a month.
Okay. So why don't we set a submission date for the 27th of May, and we can have the hearing on June 10?
Thank you.
Item number six, calendar number 17899BZ, 8973 through 95 Bay Parkway, Brooklyn. Eric Palatnik.
Barbara Hare for the applicant.
All right. We had some questions about your back and forth or working with Department of Transportation. Can you tell us where you're at?
I spoke with staff yesterday. I don't believe we received a response from DOT to our submission.
All right. I believe that we... Yes. Okay. I understand that. I know they had raised a series of issues, and you responded back, but so it's, that's where it's at? So you're good to be working with them?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Because we need their sign off.
Yes.
Some of this had to do with the methodology. Commissioner Montanez, I know you had some...
I did speak to the...
Commissioner Hinkson, sorry.
Sorry. It was my issue. Yeah, no, I had questioned whether or not you had either complied with or come to some understanding with DOT based on their comments, especially they had requested that you use the 2010 seeker manual as opposed to...
I spoke to the consultant yesterday after the review session. And the consultant is confident that their response will be accepted by DOT because of the proposed project's close proximity to Brooklyn Bay Center and the similar retail use. And applying the trip generation rates from Bay Center is appropriate, according to the consultant. And they also pointed out to me that because we are an existing shopping center, that the retail space is new space on an existing shopping center, that shoppers to the shopping center now will also frequent the new project space, the new retail space, without actually generating new trip, a new trip to the site.
No, I understood that. And actually, I think you had said that in your papers. It's just that DOT had said that they would not permit, or I guess the new manual doesn't permit sort of linkage, I guess, between two facilities.
I can only repeat to you what I, the conversation I had yesterday with the consultant.
So we'll just wait to see what DOT...
We're waiting for DOT, correct.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Well, what I recommend is that we close the hearing. We can leave the record open. I know that finally we'd want to get DOT sign off, so why don't we give them about a month to resolve those issues? Seems fair?
Yep.
All right. So we can close the hearing. We'll set the decision date for June 10. That should give you enough time. And we'll await a letter from DOT.
Thank you very much.
Take a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you again.
Item number seven, calendar number 17707BZ, 886 Glenmore Avenue, Brooklyn. Sheldon LaBelle.
Good morning. Erin Petraselli standing in for Richard LaBelle from Sheldon LaBelle's office.
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant? Any questions? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Set the decision date for May 13.
Thank you.
New cases. Item number eight, calendar numbers 371 and 37203BZ, 663 and 655 Fifth Avenue, Manhattan. Kramer Levin of Talus &amp; Frankel.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. My name is Bob Flahive. I'm with the firm Kramer Levin of Talus &amp; Frankel. We represent Red Door Salons, the operator of Physical Culture Establishment. The establishment occupies two floors in the corner building on the eighth and ninth floor, and then a floor in the roof of the adjoining building at 666 Fifth Avenue. The applicant seeks to extend the term of the special permit for an additional 10 years. That term expires May 14, 2014. The board originally approved the special permit in 2004, and then in 2011, we came back and asked for a letter of substantial compliance for some minor changes and a change in the operation. The current operator, Elizabeth Arden, Red Door Salon, has been operating the facility in accordance with those plans, and therefore, we request a full 10-year extension.
Are there any questions? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
We'll decide this on May 13.
Thank you very much.
Appeals calendar. Decision items, item number nine, calendar numbers 143 through 146, 11A, Harper Lights Court, Staten Island, Philip L. Rampola.
Good morning, Philip L. Rampola.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Continued hearings. Item number 10, calendar number 26607A, 1602 through 1610 Avenue West, Brooklyn. Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning, Larry J. Altman from Office of Frederick A. Becker.
You've lost my adjournment?
Yes.
How much time do you need?
Two weeks, please. We are prepared to submit today.
You'll submit today?
That is correct.
All right. So we can have the hearing then on May 13.
Thank you.
Submission date is April 29, and hearing date, May 13.
Thank you.
Item number 11, calendar numbers 80-11A, 84, 85, 11A, and 103, 11A, East 9th Street, Manhattan. Office of Marvin B. Mitzner.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioner is Marvin Mitzner, the applicant. I understand the executive session, there was still some concern about our response to MDL 152, and the board seeks some additional elaboration on that?
Yes. Commissioner Montanez?
Yes. I believe that I had requested at the prior hearing that you go through the different segments of 152 and explain in terms of your buildings what would be required to achieve those goals, and explain what the particular hardships would be. I think you just used a blanket hardship that you would have to go into individual apartments, perhaps, to achieve those goals, but it wasn't really detailed.
Well, 152 is a fire-stopping provision under the MDL, which, in order to comply with any of those provisions, requires intrusion into the ceiling, walls, and spaces of apartments. I'm not sure quite what more detail we could give you.
Well, you haven't given us any detail. I think you sort of piggybacked on the previous application and said the same logic applies here. I think we'd like to understand what would be a complying condition, what would the cost be associated with that, and therefore, the practical difficulty, difficulty and hardship in complying with the law. I don't think it's actually been detailed out right now, so...
All right. We can provide it.
So we understand if you have to, if you have to go into the walls and you have to do additional, I don't know, put additional material, just show that to us on plans as to where you would have to apply it and what it would cost. I think that would make this application better, and at the same par as the previous application, which detailed out all the costs associated with bringing the building up to compliance.
That's fine. We can have an engineering report that would indicate that, and also indicate what would need to be done, even verify some of the conditions contained in MDL 152.
All right. And since this is one area that was not really a part of the previous set of waivers that the board granted, I think you should also explain to us, perhaps in more detail, how you meet the other findings of, basically, that the spirit of the law is maintained as well as substantial justice done. Commissioner Hinkson, I know you have some concerns about other...
Yeah, I did too. I mean, and I shared the same concern that Commissioner Montanez had, that I just needed to have more of an explanation as to why particular items could not be met. And I don't, I think the blanket statement just simply wasn't enough. So if, you know, if your engineering report is going to talk about fire-stopping, perhaps you want to look at some of the other sections as well that you've been citing that require us to sort of understand exactly why you could not meet sort of the letter of the law. So I, you know, I think as professionals, we have an understanding, but I think when it comes to the record, you sort of have to spell it out.
Fine. We'll have our engineer include additional items as you suggest.
All right. Other questions for the applicant? All right. Mister, I hope you heard what we said yesterday about your applying for section, waiver to Section 211...
Yes.
...under the MDL. And I think, at least I noted that in order for you to even ask us to waive that, you really do have to go through the analysis of looking at all sections of the MDL that you cannot comply with. I would like you to speak to the issue of the light and air objection that you've received that's gone back and forth. First of all, one of your objections previously had a housing maintenance code, where the board cannot waive the housing maintenance code.
Yes.
We do not have the jurisdiction to do that. All right. So I don't know how that section dovetails with the MDL law that you're asking us to waive. Now, we understand that's happening in the existing units, but ultimately, it seems that if we cannot waive the housing maintenance code, I don't know whether the waiver of the MDL is going to get you what you want. So maybe you could just speak to that issue. So that's one thing. And I think the other thing is that, again, I think you should explain to us how, what the practical difficulties are. What does it mean? Does it mean that you have to open up those spaces? Do you have, it's about really the depth of the, of the room, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Well, it's two issues. There's the depth of the room, and it's also certain rooms are interior rooms. And any attempt to comply would require basically reconfiguring existing apartments that are tented.
But what would that reconfiguration look like? Can you show us that? Could your architect draw that out for us? Because I'm not sure I understand. The depth of the room is 30 feet. Do you have 30 feet? Do you have to remove walls? It's just not clear to me. So that's one issue, and if you could speak to that. And I think just in terms of the aspect about the spirit of the law maintained, I'd like you, I'd like you to speak to the issue that the board normally is not allowed to waive light and air, and how you believe that the spirit of the law is maintained as a result of this.
That's fine.
Okay. And if you can also explain to us just what the tenancy of this building is, since a lot of this hinges on the fact that these units are occupied, are they all occupied?
Yes. It's fully tented.
All four buildings?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no intent to remove any of the tenants?
No. Not as far as I know.
Can you give us an affidavit from your owner of the building to that effect?
I can present information from the owner.
I mean, in good faith, if that's what's intended, to retain the tenants, then I think there's, that's something the board can take into consideration. But we've seen various situations where the tenants finally leave, and it's new tenants. So I just want to understand, your argument is really based, at least partially based on the fact that existing tenants aren't there and they'd be inconvenienced, or they'd have to be relocated?
As well as changing the whole configuration of the unit.
I understand that they may cause...
And reduction in floor area and the cost associated with that.
All right. And you can document that for us?
Yes.
Vice Chair, did you want to say anything? Okay. All right. Are there any other questions? Are there speakers on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Good morning. I'm Dario Quinsec, representing Councilmember Mendez's office. The council member, the council member agrees with the board that the application has to provide significant detail as to the hardship purposely imposed by each and every MDL that needs to be waived. The council member sternly opposes the wholesale waiver of Articles 3 and 5 as the owner has requested in his latest submission. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right. No speakers. No additional speakers. We can continue the hearing. Can you submit to us in, how much time do you need?
Two weeks.
Two weeks? All right. Why don't we, it's a little bit complicated in our schedule, so why don't we do this? Why don't you submit to us on the 27th of May, and we'll continue the hearing on June 10?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Item number 12, calendar number 16612A, 638 East 11th Street, Manhattan. The New York City Department of Buildings.
All right. This is the Buildings Department's application. I believe both parties have agreed to adjourn this.
We've agreed to adjourn it for, I think, a period of two months to allow discussions to continue.
All right. So we'll bring you back on June 17.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number 13, calendar number 10713A, 638 East 11th Street, Manhattan. Office of Marvin B. Mitzner.
We'll put this application on the same schedule.
Very good. Thank you very much.
So June 17.
New cases. Item number 14, calendar number 4314A, 242 West 76th Street, Manhattan. Rosen and Rosen.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Robert Roseanne, Roseanne Roseanne for the Melbourne Hotel. We requested an extension of time beyond May 1 to complete our processing of the hotel certificate of occupancy application, which has been in process for some time. All the work has been completed. It is really now a matter of processing time.
Are there any questions? We did receive the Fire Department's sign off, that there are no violations that are pending, and the BIS system shows that there are no building code violations pending as well.
Yes, we did.
All right. Good. So those are resolved. Are there any questions? Any speakers on this item? No speakers, we can, we can close the hearing.
Thank you.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
How long would that extension be for?
We'll decide this case on May 13. So the decision on this case will be given on May 13. And the time period, I believe, is required, it's 15 months, is the extent in which we can give you.
We expect to have it done much sooner, we hope.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Zoning calendar. Decision items. Item number one, calendar number 21112BZ, 164 Cafe Street, Brooklyn. Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good morning, Adam Rothberg. We have a, we've completed the proposed cellar or foundation ventilation plan, so that will be submitted with the wrap and HAS or CHAS this week if it hasn't been done already, and hopefully, we can get the DEP sign off within three or four weeks, so...
All right. So we will defer the decision to June 17.
Thank you.
Item number two, calendar number 13013BZ, 1590 North Burn Avenue, Brooklyn. Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good morning, Adam Rothberg.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number three, calendar number 16313BZ, 13310, 39th Avenue, Queens. Eric Palatnik.
Hello. Good morning again, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number four, calendar number 17913BZ, 933 through 939 East 24th Street, Brooklyn. Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Good morning, Larry J. Altman from the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five, calendar number 22813BZ, 157 Columbus Avenue, Manhattan. Eric Feinstein.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. Richard Bass, Eric Feinstein, for the applicant.
We'll reopen this case.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins? Aye. Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
All right. As you know, we've reopened this case, given the fact that there were some irregularities in the board's rules and your compliance with that. But right now, it seems that it's been resolved, and we have reached out to the... And we have reached out to the parties, and we've allowed them up to May 6th if they want to add any additional comments into the record. Would you like to say anything?
We appreciate your, your understanding in this. We ask for just two considerations.
Okay.
The time limits that were mentioned in yesterday's review is extreme. Across the street, Reebok, their hours are from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We had previously asked for 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. So we asked the board's discretion to agree to those terms. There were questions regarding the construction schedule. I have the architect with me, but I can give a brief summary. I was told that it would take two to four months to install the noise attenuation, six to nine months to complete the construction, and based on D O B's schedule, six to nine months to amend the C of O. The last item was something that.
I'm sorry, can you, because that's a very long timeframe. So you said four to six months to, what was the first?
Two to four months.
Two to four months, two?
To install the noise attenuation.
Okay.
Six to nine months, this is not consecutively.
Okay. This is not consecutive, fine. Six to nine months?
To complete all the work in the, in the space.
And that goes beyond the sound attenuation?
That goes, so the two to four months is part of the six to nine months. So it's not two to four plus six to nine. It's inclusive. And then, you know, who knows how long it takes D O B to, to amend, inspect and amend. The plans have been approved, but for the P C E approval. The last item was something that you raised, used a term event days, which is a term I was unfamiliar with, so.
All right, I know there was concerns that sometimes these physical cultural establishments, including CrossFit, have these competitions where a lot of people.
Right, that's what, that's what I assume you meant.
Right, that's, I know it was very.
It's a, it's a small space. There was never any plan to have a competition. You can't have a competition in 6,500 square feet. So we can agree never to have a competition there because we never planned on having a competition there.
Oh, right, I thought as much, that it's not necessarily the space that is conducive for, for those kind of events.
And the last item was the, the term. Based on the schedule of construction in D O B, that brings us very close to the two year term that you're granting, we ask for some leeway, either three years, or we can provide six month reports on our progress. But the last thing I, I think you, the board wants, and my applicant wants, is to be back here again, showing the same thing.
Well, I think the reason why it's a short term is to ensure that you can be monitored, and right now, I don't think your client has that much credibility. They've been using the space in the R eight B district. I think for me, that's the most concern that I have.
Understand.
And so the reality is this two year term, it's not as if the, the facility is not going to be functioning during that period. My understanding is that even during construction, the P C is not going to be shut down. So you still have those two years to continue your operations, but, all right, we'll take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think, any questions? All right, just on the hours of operation, so you requested 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
6:00 a.m. to 10:00.
Sorry, 6:00 a.m., 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and we had recommended 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Now, because not Saturdays and Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays are, were shorter hours, which was 9:00 to 6:00.
That's correct. We were asking for a 6:00 to 10:00, seven days a week. Our competitor across the street, which has a faux CrossFit operation, is 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week.
All right, we'll take that into consideration. I think the hours that we had recommended are not that much different. We're talking about one hour really on five days a week, right? So at 6:00 a.m., you want to start at 6:00 a.m., and not 9:00 p.m. instead of 10:00 p.m. As for the weekends, all right, we'll take that into consideration.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your indulgence.
Yes, Vice Chair.
I just wanted to raise an issue that I raised yesterday at review session, and that was, can you give us some assurance that the employees or the contractors, the trainers, will not be using the space for private training sessions after the regular operating hours?
That is how they intend to operate. But just know, as in all businesses, if the hours are 6 o'clock, staff may be there beforehand to set up. Also, if the, you know, just from a practical point of view, if someone's in the shower and it's 10 o'clock, they're not going to kick them out immediately, but they will not be operating a P C E except for the hours that the board assigns.
And there will not be private training sessions?
And there will not be private, there will be not private, there will not be private training sessions, yes.
Okay.
What you said.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Bass? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wright?
Good morning, members of the board, Chris Wright, Simonson Wright. On behalf of the condominium, I want to just thank the board very much for reopening and allowing some further discussion on the mitigation measures and some conditions on the term. My goal here is to.
Mr. Wright, just to clarify, but we'll give you five minutes. I understand another speaker will be, also be given five minutes, and there's one additional speaker will be given three minutes?
Yes, I may need a minute more. If I do, the other person will reduce her appropriately, it'll be 10 minutes between me and the condominium representative, and then there's someone from the, from the Block Association who wants to speak as well.
All right.
We will keep it brief. And Mr. Bass has addressed some of the concerns I have, but let me just go through it. The term, we think the term should be two years, bring people back in two years, let's see what's really going on, let's see the mitigation measures are working or need to be, we fully endorse that. We think the term should start in July of last year, when they started classes, there was late discussion about that point. At that point, the applicant agreed to July start date. Let's bring people back so we can actually assess what's going on here, and if need be, amend the mitigation measures. We're very grateful that the mitigation measures were returned to the plans, showing a full floor, a double floor and padding throughout the entire facility. We would like a fast track to install those. It's our own view, they should close and install and then reopen. I understand there's concerns about that from a business point of view. This timeframe of two, four, five or six months, I think opens up a can of worms, that people won't know whether or not impacts are in mitigation areas or not mitigation areas. We mostly just would like to make sure it's a tight timeframe. We, I, I question this two to four months to install this system. I really question that.
I think they need to get permits before they install, so that's, that's the area which is a little bit.
Okay, I understand, it's a little.
It's the Buildings Department issue.
I, I understand.
But we understand you wanted fast track.
We just, we're grateful the measures are back in the plan, which had been removed. The R eight, this should be an absolute ban. That's under zoning anyway. I think that resolves that issue. We don't want to guess about what's going on in there. A complete ban in that area. The hours of operation, we've talked, it's been talked about, we don't want anybody in there when it's closed. I think that matter has been addressed today. That's important. We, we, we prefer the 9:00 a.m. to the six, we, we prefer shorter hours, but the hours you proposed yesterday are acceptable, but we ask this condition, that perhaps no weight dropping activity in the mornings before 9:00 a.m., and no weight dropping after 6:00 p.m. They have testified that weight dropping is a third to 40% of their services. Let people drop weights during the day when people aren't there, and not first thing in the morning, and not in the evenings. We want the shorter weekend hours of, that you propose, with the same ban, no weight dropping before noon on, on the weekends. I think you have a 6:00 a.m., you have a 9:00 to 6:00 on weekends you propose. Okay, my concern more is during the week, that they not drop weights before 9:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m. We're asking, based on their report, a ban of 185 pound limit on any weight dropping activities that's geared to their own report all the time, 24, throughout their entire operations. And then last, and it's been addressed, and we're grateful, no competitions. There was a brochure put out last summer by Mr. Newman, saying they plan to bring all their competitions to this event. It's submitted to the record, I have a copy here. We are grateful to hear there'll be no competitions. Now, I understand the board may not want to adopt all of these restrictions on the hours of operations, let me give you the condominium's priorities. Priority number one, no competitions. This should be a place for the average person. Two, a limit on weight dropping activities before 9:00 a.m. and after 6:00 p.m. If not a complete ban, maybe a weight limit ban, to keep those, for the obvious reasons. And then we, the third one is that a, a complete ban, a, a, a flat ban above 185 pounds. They've testified that addresses their needs, they've even said people can't physically do more than that. So we would, that's, but that's just to give you our order of priorities. The last thing I'll say is they have a facility on 28th Street, there's no limits, it's the same operators, there's nobody who lives there, they can have their competitions there, they can have their superhuman weight dropping activities there. Let this facility be for the average person, and let the Olympic hopefuls go to 28th Street. So we don't think we're impacting the business plan. That concludes my remarks. I think I did in less than five minutes.
You did. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Next speaker.
Jennifer Berg, Board President of 45 West 67ths. Thank you very much for reopening the hearing. I represent, as you know, the owners in my building, and also 157 people who notarized objection forms. As you know, these 157 have found the application problematic, and we think that, I, I just want to underscore Chris's mitigation points that would go a long way to allay the concerns, and I thank you very much. Again, no competitions would be fantastic. I do think the comparison between Reebok, which is a purpose-built gym, with, you know, very carefully engineered and acoustically engineered, I think it really is, you know, this is a retrofit. I think it's a very different scenario. So thank you for keeping that in mind, and thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Hello, I'm Cliff Bernstein. I live on 50 West 67th Street, across the street from the location, speaking for the Block Association. We want a good neighbor on our block, and we sincerely hope that CrossFit will be that good neighbor. But we're concerned that the many limitations that are described in this will not be enforced without supervision, and that giving keys to trainers who can bring in their own clients, which is what's happening now, means that there is no supervision. So we're talking about roughly 16 hours a day, and extending into the evenings and weekends, and to me, that means we're going to be picking off, residents will be picking off, people on the block will be picking off problems and coming here to complain about behavior. The same thing is true with regard to security in the building. I don't see any way that passing out keys to trainers is going to get anything that's being discussed here enforced. So we're starting out with an unenforced agreement. I'm concerned about the reaction of the applicant to what's been requested. I haven't followed this extremely closely, but there is a contemptuous feeling that says, I'm going to push to the limit, and that's okay. We'll see how you react to it. So for me, the issue of supervision is focal. No supervisors, I don't believe they're going to be good neighbors. It's just trainers with keys coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, Mr. Bass?
Thank the Commissioners. I have no response to those statements.
Okay, all right, the board will take into consideration. We've heard the points of view, but I think for now, we can, we can close the hearing, and we'll set the decision date. Yes, Mr. Wright?
I'm sorry, but you said there's a May 6 submission date?
It's not, I, I don't think you, you've.
I didn't understand, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, right, it's just for the entities that were not, did not receive the material.
Thank you very much.
Right, and if there, if there's a submission, I.
No, I don't intend to.
Right, it's, it's not for you, Mr. Wright.
I understand, I just want, I didn't, I caught that, I wanted to be sure.
All right, but if any of the other city planning or the community board submits anything into the record, we'll accept it. Mr. Bass, you will have the opportunity to respond back, because you should as the applicant.
I appreciate that.
So, so if, we don't think it's going to, that schedule is actually going to play out, but if there are any comments that come in on May 6th, you can respond, respond back on May 13th, and we'll set the decision date for May 20th. And I'd like to thank both parties for giving us your points of view, and we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you very much.
Make the motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aide.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Item number 6, 246-13BZ, 54149th Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Adam Rothkrieg.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aide.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 7, 270-13BZ, 288 Dover Street, Brooklyn.
Good morning, Eric Palatnik.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aide.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 8, 28513BZ, 495 Flapish Avenue, Brooklyn, Washern Bernstein.
Good morning, young applicant.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aide.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye. Thank you.
Item number 9, 30213BZ, 140 West 23rd Street, Manhattan, the Office of Frances Angelino.
Good morning, Commissioners, Frank Angelino on behalf of the application.
Motion to grant.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aide.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ollie Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Continued hearing items, item number 10, 54-12BZ, 65-3900 Second Street, Queens, the Office of Gerald J. Caliendo.
Good morning, Sandy Anagostu, representing the applicant.
You've asked for another adjournment, and this will be the last adjournment that we'll grant here.
Yes, we understand that.
Yes, we understand that. We've nearly completed the material that the board requested at the last hearing.
Okay, can you submit to us on May 6?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So, May 6, and we'll continue the hearing on May 20.
Thank you.
Item number 11, 214-12BZ, 2784 Coney Island Avenue, the firm of Phillips &amp; Neiser.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, Kevin B. McGrath, for the owners of 2784 Coney Island Avenue between Kathleen Street and Gerard Courts and Gerard Court. I'm aware of the discussions that you had at the Executive Committee yesterday. So, in order to respond to your concerns and to expedite the hearing, I will deal with subdivisions A, B, and C of Section 21, 7221 of the zoning resolution. A, the uniqueness of the physical condition of the premises. The environmental issues are a factor in the uniqueness of this site. The present structure must be completely demolished in its entirety in order to build an as-of-right building. The prior use of the premises since 1955 create, as a gas station and a car wash, today create environmental concerns in accordance with EPA rules and regulations. The cost to cure or satisfy these conditions that are present are considered by you to be assumptions or speculative. But these assumptions are based on the prior use of the premises. It is a valid assumption that a gas station that was in operation since, starting in 1955, had sunken fuel tanks and some oil spillage from caring for their cars. But if you do not believe that this assumption is valid, the applicant is ready to and has hired EPM, Environmental Planning and Management, to conduct a geophysical survey with ground penetrating radar to investigate the presence of such tanks and a geo probe that will be used to create six soil borings in order to collect soil and groundwater samples for laboratory studies. This, of course, will take some time. And I understand that you're considering closing this hearing today, but I respectfully request that you keep this matter open so that you and we can have this report before you when you make your decision. I therefore would ask, this study will take about a month, and the financial expert will take a week, so I'm respectfully requesting a six-week adjournment. The discussion yesterday also centered around the 711 property that was developed on the south side of the property. This was done some 20 or 30 years ago. The Environmental Protection Administration had no mandatory requirements to satisfy unless there was a violation of record or a complaint. This building, as we understand it, was built without a seller and could then maybe have avoided any environmental studies or requirements. In answer to--
I'm sorry, Mr. McGrath, you're saying that the 711, that the gas station was converted 30 years ago to--
Between 20 and 30 years ago, yes.
And at that time, they did not do any remediation because they were not covered by--
They were not required to do it because there was no violation of record on the property, so that they didn't have to. I am told also--
But isn't it the same for your property? If you had to redevelop the site, would you need to do any remediation?
Well, once the owner is aware of some contamination, they are obligated to act under the EPA rules. If they're not, if they don't know of a condition, they wouldn't have to do it.
Do you know--
Or if they could seal, I'm sorry, they could actually seal the land permanently and therefore not violate the cover--
Right.
And therefore not have to do anything.
Okay.
But in order to build a one- or two-story structure on this property for an as-of-right development with the proper parking, you would need, you would be aware of the contamination because we would be delivering a document to you that says that the land is contaminated so that you can't build on contaminated land unless you seal it.
All right, so you could seal it, you could have a slab-on-grade and one-story commercial building which you're allowed as-of-right without doing the remediation. So that's a possibility--
Yeah, that's a possibility, but then you have to look at the economics of--
I understand, but you wouldn't be expending all those costs. So I think a big part of your analysis is assuming that over $500,000 is being spent to clear up the site. So that's--
Well, a little less than that, yes, Madam Chair, but--
Right, okay.
But in reality, when you have to, when you look at the zoning and look at the parking requirements, you have to build a substantial structure to, an as-of-right structure economically to try to--
Okay, so maybe that's something you should consider, which is a lesser variance. Since the board have raised concerns about the car wash, maybe you should look at something which is a one-story commercial building, which at least the use is allowed as-of-right, and with some parking waiver. I think that would be a better response to the site than the car wash. And I'd like you to look at that.
We have looked at it, we will look at it again, but we have submitted to you a building that complies as-of-right.
I understand that, but I'm asking you to look at another alternative.
I understand what you're asking, and I will do that.
And just on another issue, the other site, which is the 711 site, are you, do you know for a fact that they haven't done any remediation, or are you just assuming that they may have not had to? Because I feel like we need to understand that.
Right. I've been told that there was no remediation by the owner, by the owner of my site, said that there was no remediation at the time that that was built.
All right, okay.
But I will verify that and give you a fourth one statement. In answer to your inquiry about what was, what transpired at the building department between the licensed engineer and his consultant, I have submitted just today, gave to the Secretary copies of an affidavit of the president of the zoning and code compliance firm that did interact with the building department from, they prefiled this in September of 2010. So he interacted since October 7, 2010, until November 29, 2010, when the permits were issued. And prior to the, and by the way, I have the consultant here today to answer any questions. Prior to obtaining the permits, not only did the representative of the owner deal with the plan examiner, but also the borough commissioner reviewed the zoning issues and issued the permit. The application, the applicant was part of this due diligence on the part, an investigation on part of the Department of Buildings as well as itself. And after the inquiry and after the direction by the commissioner to the plan examiner to actually study the use of this property as a valid legal car wash, the permits were issued.
When was that?
That was, there were seven meetings, and the seven meetings took place from October 7 to November 16, when all the objections were removed, and the permit was issued on November 29. So no work was done before the permit was issued, and it was only after the permit was issued until May 11, 2011, when a stop-work order was issued, was, and 99%, or 90%, between 90 and 99%, I can't be exact, of work was completed.
But let me understand this. You're, okay, so there were seven meetings from the point of when they got the objections and when they got the permit in November sometime, right?
Yes, that's correct.
But it was based on the three objections that they initially received?
No.
Oh, there were more objections?
The affidavit, yes, there were, there are actually, well, more objections. They're attached, they're attached to, I'm sorry, you didn't have an opportunity--
That's okay.
--to read this affidavit. But this affidavit goes in detail as to what happened with the building department and with the consultant. First of all, there were, as you rightly point out, three objections, one, two, and three. And that dealt with the plan examiner saying that this property was a border standards and appeals case--
Right.
And that he could not remove these. It was, as a result of his inquiry and the commissioner's inquiry, that the consultant supplied all sorts of information, plans, financial, records from the finance department, and maps of the area, showing that there was no longer a gas station. And as a matter of fact, but this is totally aside--
Right, but that's the gas, okay, the gas station, right, not the car wash.
So, that's right.
About the gas station and the relationship of this site to the gas station site, which was a BSA case, correct?
That's right. It was, the case was brought as a ten-year term variance--
Yes, I know.
--for a gas station, right. And on that property was a variance. But at that time, there was no need to get a variance for a car wash. There was an obligation of the owner to apply for a variance with respect to the operation of a gas station. And you issued not one, but a number of extensions on that variance.
Right, I think Commissioner Hinkson had raised a question. I think her concern was during this back and forth, was there really any discussion about the car wash and it's the fact that there hasn't been a discontinuance for two years? But I think that is not there in the record. Those discussions, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is those discussions, which have to do with the fact that the car wash ceased in operation, took place after you had spent, or your client had expended cost to modify or alter the car wash site. And that happened only after there were complaints. Am I wrong? That's--
I respectfully disagree with Mrs. Hinkson. I don't find it--
No, she's just asking the question.
No, the question, no, there was a discussion, and I have with me the consultant here who will testify exactly what was said. But after they got through the first three exceptions, objections, then they moved on to the Commissioner Gallagher, who then discussed the zoning issue, which was the valid car wash.
But it's, okay, I'm just reading here what it says, and it talks about consultation with Commissioner Gallagher, and it had to do with the BSA renewal--
No.
And the CO for the--
There's also, I'm sorry, didn't mean--
Go ahead.
But there is a second meeting.
Okay.
Alex Otoski is here, and he can explain to you exactly the colloquy that went on. I will step aside and have him answer.
But before you go, I just wanted to ask this question. So I can be clear.
Yes.
I'm looking at the 79 CO.
That's right.
And the 79 CO covers lots 70 and 72.
That's correct.
Presumably, it's the adjacent lot that had, of course, the gas station portion.
That's correct.
Correct? But since the CO covers those two lots, and you have understanding that the BSA case was on the adjoining lot, but the CO covers both lots, my question is, and maybe I see things a little bit differently than some of my colleagues had seen it, is that since the CO covers those two lots, you would still have to come back to the BSA, only because there isn't a division at the CO level of what was actually the BSA case and what was the car wash. So just as prudent, just to be prudent, one would come here and say, look, do I need to come here for an extension? How does that proceed? As opposed to just simply going to DOB for this? I mean, that would just be the red flag that would present itself immediately to me. If you had two COs, that might be different. But you only have one that covers both lots.
No.
That to me would be--
Right, but I think from our, if they had to change the CO, the only thing they would really need to do for us, for the site that was before us, would be to surrender the grant. Because they don't, they're not relying on that anymore since it's now an as-of-right commercial use.
But even so, that would still bring you back.
Well, this is, this has a long history, this property. They did come back to the board in some time, I don't really remember the exact date, but I believe it was in 2010. And the board said that the application to extend the variance that we're talking about now, the prior variance, was not appropriate because the gas station wasn't there.
Right, but I think, and I'm not sure of the relevance of all this because--
That's right.
Ultimately, it's not, you know, the issue of the gas station site and commercial is not before us right now. It's true that they may have raised the issue, but I think what's critical for this application, because you're right, they did file that, they in fact filed for what's before us right now under an amendment application--
Yes.
--and we appropriately told them that that's not within our jurisdiction, and the site is not before us. So you'd have to file a new variance application. But just getting to the point here, you're, I think you're saying that in fact with Mr. Gallagher, they actually discussed the issue of the car wash. Is that right? Okay.
Yeah, please state your name for the record.
Alex Otoski from Cityscape. Can I elaborate on your point a little bit more? Well, before I get into the discussion, I like this, last time we had a little miscommunication regarding the timeframe. So what we've done, we've put together a broad timeframe of events that occurred, and we put together a detailed timeline of the events that occurred in the Department of Buildings. And back to your question, that flag was raised regarding the certificate of occupancy. And the examiner at the time, after consulting with Joe Gallagher as well, he wrote down that objection, 11-8, existing CO was found for water laundry, he accepted the existing certificate of occupancy. And on the objection before, he wrote down that you still have to file a new certificate of occupancy for lot 70. So he said basically what, he accepted our certificate of occupancy and said he had to file for lot 70, not a certificate of occupancy for the 711 because it doesn't have one essentially. Further, the discussion regarding the two-year discontinuance, which is a critical issue, I believe, that discussion, we, first we had three meetings regarding the legality of the existing water laundry. That was raising the first three objections. Those three objections, the examiner at the time did not feel that he was in power or in a position to resolve those three objections. Which is when I went back to the client, I explained to him what happened, what occurred in the Department of Buildings, and that he was a little frustrated, and he said, I'm coming with you to the Department of Buildings. Which is when, at that point, the client came with me to the Department of Buildings, and we both, with the examiner, went to see Gallagher. And Gallagher spoke about those three objections, the legality of those three objections, and he also mentioned, he also mentioned to the examiner to look into the discontinuance or possible discontinuance, is this an issue? He mentioned it to him, we went back. At that point, we had no answer. So, I mean, this is a new issue that was raised to us. We came back to him the following meeting, we met with the landlord of the property, he owns the property, and he explained to us--
Right, and this was all before November 29?
This is all during plan examination.
No, is it before the permit was issued?
Yes, this is, I'll tell you exactly, this is in my affidavit, October 19, October 19.
Okay, so, and you provided at that time information regarding--
At that time, yes.
--the continuous, that there was no discontinuance?
At that time, we went back to the landlord because we had no idea how to research this as well, but we went back to the gentleman who owns the property. He told us that he was using the car wash in 2006, and he even, and at that time, we didn't ask him, but he later on provided us with the water bills for $2,000, $3,000 that he was using in 2006. And--
Right, but it was a two-year period, right?
Yes.
So, but then what was that, what, how, how do they represent from 2006 onwards to 2010?
So this only changed in 2005, which 2006 they were operational. In 2006, at the end of 2007, he said the business is a little slow, so he installed some sort of a recycling water treatment device, and he was using it for detailing as well. I believe that this is what he said, and we have an affidavit from the landlord at the time who was using it, or his brother, who was using it at the time as a business. And he also, and that could be tracked, but because he, there's foam bills, there's sanitary bills, that I also have here, that I presented, there's water bills, foam bills, department buildings, the gas bills, rubbish removal, and I present--
Is that what was presented to the Buildings Department?
This, the organization of this came later during the process of the recon. But we did have that discussion, and at the time, he accepted the affidavit from the owner, and various other minor documents that--
Can you provide us with those documents that were presented to DOB in the initial review?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Not the one during reconsideration?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay.
Is that it? Any more questions?
All right, any questions on this? Okay.
No, no, it's okay.
So the affidavit that we have right now really details what happened between that short period of time?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to--
We did not deal with the recon because that's after--
Right.
--the stop-work order. So dealing with the reliance, we must deal with, at the time the permit was issued. You have indicated that-- You have indicated that good faith reliance should be weighed by community opinion.
I didn't say that. I said that good faith reliance is one finding, but it doesn't override the C finding. That is what I said.
Right.
And that the board should understand that even though the Department of Buildings, which is really what good faith reliance is on, that they've relied on the Department of Buildings who made a mistake, and the work was done, I don't think that that can override the board's review of the application vis-à-vis the other findings, particularly the C finding. If the use is not appropriate and does not meet that C finding, then it doesn't necessarily mean we should grant this just because of good faith reliance. That was what I meant to say.
Right. Well, that is something that I considered.
Okay.
The surrounding community supports this project. And they did by, and the people that are here objecting to it now are the same people that objected to it when it was before the Community Planning Board 13. And with Community Planning Board 13...
And aren't they the people who live immediately adjacent to...
Some of them, no, not all, no.
No, I'm just asking.
There is one gentleman that lives immediately adjacent on Girard Court, and I will deal with that in a minute. But yes, there is, but the people that raised the same questions raised it there. Community Planning Board 13 unanimously approved this. Not only that, but 619 individuals signed a petition in favor of this operation. And recently, 38 residents and 26 business owners signed, recently signed affidavits in support of the project. A number of individuals who sign those affidavits and are and live in the community are present today to testify to you as to their feeling on the subject matter. In addition, when I submitted my brief, I submitted two cases that dealt with the granting or the denial of a variance when you rely on community opposition only. And those can be found on page seven and page eight of my brief. In addition to planning and designing this car wash, the applicant has acted to reduce the congestion on Coney Island Avenue. And they've designed their car wash so that it will only be 20 seconds to a half a minute from the time they come off the Coney Island Avenue into the car wash when it starts to be serviced. This is unlike any car wash that I have ever seen, and I doubt very much whether there are many that operate this way. So instead of pre-working the car wash, they immediately put the car into the car wash. The person driving the car gets out, is handed a ticket, and they go into the car wash to deal with paying for that ticket. The car is put into the car wash immediately. According to the zoning resolutions, there are 10 reservoir spaces where after the car comes out of the car wash, then the tires are cleaned, the wax is, the shining is done, and any of the other ancillary, and the vacuums, there are 18 vacuums in this area. So what it does is it immediately pulls the cars off Coney Island Avenue, and until the car is ready to exit again, it's in a reservoir area, one of 10 reservoir areas that is part of this application. They also, they also have agreed to have not one, but two staff employees that will stand out on Coney Island Avenue. And as we all know, this is a corner plot, so they'll stand out on the corner and make sure that no car blocks Girard Court.
So what will they do?
They will hold them back. First of all, this is the prior picture of what this car wash looks like. And I believe that the car wash now is an improvement, a vast improvement. Let me just point out that when I said that the applicant is going to block this off with a concrete block, that's facing Girard Avenue, so there'll be no violation onto Girard Avenue. Here is Girard Avenue from Coney Island Avenue. So the person, the two people that will be employed, one of them will be there to make sure that no car is in this area that I'm showing. So as soon as the car is ready to go in, goes right in to here, and this area is free of any cars, there'll be no queuing in this area.
Is that because the cars will circle the block? I'm just trying to understand some...
No. The cars will queue down on Coney Island Avenue if there's any queuing at all.
But they're at the intersection, so they would be queuing on the other side of the intersection?
On the other side, not, yes.
But your person, but they would have, all right, but they wouldn't, they have already crossed the intersection for the monitor to, or the traffic monitor to tell them?
No. Here, the people would come... I'm sorry, I don't have a picture, but...
They're blocking a lane of traffic.
Here's Girard Street, and the people would be coming south on Coney Island Avenue. And there is the intersection. So we would have an employee on this side of the avenue, on the court, so that no one could be in the intersection. And when they're ready to put a car in, they would drive past the intersection and take a right turn in. There's no queuing on this side of the street. All the queuing will be on the other, the side of the street adjacent to the car wash.
But aren't you then saying that the queue takes place in a lane of traffic?
No. Well, it's a lane of traffic, but it's, it's, there's, many times, there's no parking here, so there would be queuing in a parking area if there was no parking.
But the times that there are cars parked at the curb...
Yes, if there would be, but the way they've set this up, the queue will move very, very quickly, because there's no, there's no processing here, unlike the regular car. When you go to a car wash, you pull up, and they start to work on your car before they wash it. Here, that's not it at all. They immediately pull the car right into the process. And then here are the spaces where they work on the car after.
But even though you do...
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Even though you do your vacuuming afterwards and your buffing afterwards, there's still some processing that has to happen prior to you relinquishing your car, like taping your windshield wiper down in the rear, folding your mirrors in, taking off your antenna and putting it inside if it's a screw-off antenna. And those things, as well as telling the car wash operator what type of wash you want, whether or not you want the extra wax, whether or not you want the rims done or the armor all, those things are still going to take some time. You're not going to be able to pull in, hop out, and walk away and just have the car on a conveyor belt. There's still going to be something that causes a little delay. And if you have a situation where it's a prime time, like after a snowstorm, you're still going to have cars queuing, and those cars are going to queue in a drive lane up Coney Island Avenue, possibly blocking other businesses, even if they don't block Gerald Court. So how is that going to be handled? We don't know what businesses are just north of that site, whether or not they have driveways and parking situations that your cars are going to be blocking as they're waiting. Because it's really highly unlikely that this car wash will be able to be operated without there ever being a queue of more than one car. It's just highly unlikely. Anybody who drives and uses car washes knows that even if you do all of your processing after the fact, there's still going to be delays.
You're absolutely right by saying that, and there's some things that cannot be avoided during the car wash process when you check in the car. But the owners have done everything in their due diligence to possibly remediate and to minimize that time, including putting in a POS system, a very high-efficiency POS to enter the information as fast as possible to get relayed. And they also did as much as possible to reverse, because from before this car wash was actually entered from the other side, from Girard Court. Now they reversed it, they redid all the equipment, reversed it, just to minimize the queue on the street to support and to address the future neighborhood concerns that might happen.
Right. But I think that what you need to address is, and I understand that the operators of the car wash genuinely want this to go as fast as possible. I don't think that they're in here trying to mess up the traffic flow and disturb the neighborhood. But the question is, if a queue forms, and a queue will form, we know that, then what is going on north of the site, and how will that disrupt the operations north of the site? And I don't know anything other than what is going on in the car wash and Gerald Court. What is going on north of Gerald Court, which is where the queue is going to be? Because you're saying the monitor is going to disrupt that line at Gerald Court. So the line is going to form on the street north of Gerald Court.
That's correct.
What is going on there? Are there other businesses there?
There are businesses.
Do they utilize driveways?
No, they do not.
They do not?
No. All of these businesses are front on the side, unless they are like, I will describe, a car rental, because then a car rental has the parking, so it comes off. But that's south, that's...
It would be helpful if you would identify what's going on north of that site, and what type of operation it is, so that we...
Right. And can you also just show us, right, and can you show us where the queuing is taking place vis-à-vis the other, where you anticipate that?
Fine.
I just, I remain concerned about this. I understand, and I would agree with Commissioner Otley-Brown, that I'm sure that the operators are trying to do the best they can. But I think it's an unfortunate situation. It's one thing that this car wash may have existed a long time ago, but we have to look at this now, and it troubles me. This is also not a clean slate site where one could think about sort of reorganizing the configuration. It's already in place.
Madam Chair and Commissioner, we do have a test. This was in operation. There were no complaints by the community board or the community. We minimized the delay when we were operation. You see, we had 99% of the job completed, so we opened. And then we had a stop-work order. And then the attorney representing the owner, the landlord, made an agreement with the City of New York so this could stay open. And it stayed open until December of 2011. So we have a history of this operation. This is not a new operation in the sense that it never operated. It actually did, and after the stop-work order was that it continued, and then it was closed by the city.
Right. And during that period, there were a lot of corrections that were made, I believe, to address issues. Isn't that correct?
There were some, but as soon as they started to operate, they realized that the configuration is the exact same as here. And so they didn't have to do a major alteration. They operated this without complaint from the city or the Building Department or the community. And then it was closed. So we do have some history that might help you as to the operation. And I will give you photographs of, by the way, photographs are included in what is north of your package, but I will specifically run photographs from the court.
Right. But my recollection of the neighbors testifying had to do with the volume of cars and the situation regarding the curb cuts and the lack of safety for the pedestrians and the overuse of the site because of all of the customers. So I don't, I don't have any recollection of this site being run effortlessly and in harmony with the community interests. I don't know. But that's not what, it seemed as if it was happening by what the community members were stating at the last hearings. I mean, I could be wrong in my recollection, but it seemed to be problematic to me.
Well, when I finish my presentation, we do have people from the community that will talk to how this was operated.
Okay.
Could I just ask, in your estimation, how many cars do you think at the most queue would be queuing?
Well, I have an expert here in David Cuff, who has given a report, and if David can tell you exactly what his report is.
David Cuffman, ACOM. We did the environmental review of the project, and transportation was one of the technical areas that we reviewed. And based on the information that we got from the applicant, and also, we independently verified it against IT trip generation rates, at the peak weekend hour, you would have 20 to 25 cars showing up at the site. But obviously, they all get processed. So from our standpoint, we compared it to Seeker, there was not a, you know, potential for an environmental impact.
Right. I understand, which is about the intersection, but I think our question, Commissioner Hinkson's question is about how many cars are coming during this peak period? How, you know, what is, how quickly can these cars be processed without any queuing? But it seems that...
At 20 seconds, 20 seconds a car.
Right. I mean, queuing is more of an enforcement issue.
You've got, you know, over two minutes between the end and getting to your, you know, endpoint. So I just, I understand 20 seconds is great. That's, I wish I could go to a car wash and it'd only take me 20 seconds. But if I'm at the end of that line, I'm still waiting, you know, significant, if there are more people after me, I've, you know, that's a, that's a long time in a lane of traffic.
Right. But it is Coney Island Avenue, it is a pretty wide lane here. It's not like it's going to stop traffic for all of Coney Island Avenue people. The other cars can go around, and it will, those cars will continue down the street. There will be queuing, but there will be the flagman there to make sure that it doesn't block the intersection. And again, this 20 to 25 is the peak hour, so that's, you know, at the most, and then it will, it will start to decrease from that point. So it ramps up, and then it comes back down. So it's not like there's a queue there all day long.
That's true.
I just don't think having queuing on the public street is a practical thing to have. I mean, for car washes in New York City, we require reservoir space. It's a monitor or no monitor, I think it's an improper use of the city streets. I don't think this works. I don't think it works.
Well, the reservoir space is on the property, and it is being used for cars so that they quickly leave the street and go into the property and get serviced on it. And there is a requirement, as you point out, Vice Chair, that there has to be reservoir space, and there is reservoir space here.
All right. Are there other questions for Ms. McGrath? I know that you want to have additional time, and we can give you that. I just want to raise a couple of issues. I think the C finding, you'll have to document better than you've done so far. I understand you believe that this has received a lot of support, that may be the case, but I think we actually would like to know what we're talking about in terms of queuing and where they're going to stand, because it's very concerning to me as well. I think that you started off this presentation by saying that you're going to focus on the A, B, and C, but I would like you to look at the E finding. And I think if you make this threshold of either through contamination or through additional costs that were expended based on the permits that now cannot be recaptured without some kind of viable use on the site, I think you should look at a retail or commercial establishment, which is one, one story, and look at a parking waiver. That could be a lesser variance and may allow you to recoup some of the investment.
I will take that under advisement, as I said. But just to end the C finding, this will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This has been there 63 years. The word alter is very important. This is not only doesn't alter it, it's an essential element of the neighborhood. It's there longer than most structures that were there. And not only doesn't it alter the character of the neighborhood, it makes it better because if you take a look at these two pictures, you will see that it's an improvement rather than altering or affecting the essential character of the neighborhood.
Well, I'm not even going to talk about the signage and all the other aspects of this building and whether they're appropriate there or not. I think you haven't made a case for us where you've talked about the, you've taken some photographs. I don't think you've given us any real understanding of the streetscape along this avenue to make a case that somehow this is not going to alter the essential character. So that's one thing. I think the C finding has two prongs to it as well. And what is, the second has to do with the impact on surrounding buildings and I think, or surrounding areas and properties. So I think that that's the one that's of more concern. We understand that on Coney Island Avenue, you have a few C8 uses, we know that. But I think the other prong is the one that's more difficult to meet. And I'd like, you don't need to speak to it now, you can come back and present that case.
Well, I would like to have people speak to the issue of how this operated and why they're in favor.
Oh, yes, we'll take testimony from members of the public, and both sides can comment. Right, are there people here to speak on this item? Yes, each person will be given three minutes. Please come forward, yes. State your name and your address.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alex Kuchek. I reside at 3415 Gider Avenue. I'm not the greatest public speaker in the world, therefore I'll make this very short. But this matter concerns me a lot, and that's why I'm here today to show my support. I've been residing in the great Chipshead Bay area for the past 15 years. I live just a couple of blocks away from Z Best Car Wash, which is literally the best car wash in every sense of the word. Have you ever taken your car to a car wash where disappointing the quality of the job, the long lines like you mentioned? I know I have. Sometimes the rims are left dirty, the windows have streaks on them, or maybe water is still dripping down from the trunk when the employee comes to and says, oh, it's ready. What do you do? You try to find the manager or the owner, who is never present at these moments, and you have to leave disappointed, swearing would never ever come back to this place again, not at Z Best. The managers and/or owners are always present and courteous to all customers, sometimes even finishing the job themselves just to make the customers happy. There may be two or three first-class car washers in the great New York area that don't have these problems, and Z Best is one of them. And it's in our neighborhood. When they started building the wash, I couldn't wait to see what it's going to be. Once they opened, I knew that I found my new favorite wash. I used to go to Z Best maybe three, four times a week. I would have gone more, but my wife said if I go anymore, I would wash off the paint of my car. That's how much I love that place, and I know I'm not the only one. We all remember when Sandy hit in our area, and Z Best Car Wash helped out many customers with coupons for detailing and cleaning out the mess it caused. We all know how hard it is to open any business from scratch, how much hard work, sweat, and tears go into it, not even mentioning the financial aspect of it. Z Best is a beautiful car wash with amazing service, great workers and owners. Both my car and I miss them very much and hope that they will reopen very soon so our neighborhood can once again be filled with clean cars. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I just want to mention one more thing, because I've been sitting here and listening. Since they've been closed, I tried many other car washes, and just want you to know, I'm sure you've been to car washes before, there's not one car wash that doesn't have queues online, and you must wait. But in this place, we all, you know, some people have cards, VIP cards. We pull up, they scan the cards. It literally takes seconds to pull into the car. And most windshield wipers don't need to be taped down, the antennas go down themselves, so it's very quick.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, good morning. My name is Alana Shirov, and I'm a local resident. I'm a small business owner myself, and I live a few blocks away from the Z Best Car Wash. Being a small business owner in a current challenging environment, you know, and I can attest that it's difficult at best to build and grow the new business from scratch and to risk all your personal savings and everything you have worked for only to be shut down in a few months. I commend the Z Best owners for their attempt to establish a brand-new business in our community that definitely benefits its residents. The benefits that this business brings to our community are the job creation, convenience of the services that this business offers, the location is no longer a vacant lot that was known for drug and prostitution activities, and also offers a healthy competition to strive to do better than their rivals. Z Best Car Wash is not an eye store, and you saw the pictures, it looks beautiful. I mean, unfortunately, it's been shut down, and it's starting to lapidate and to deteriorate, and it needs an owner. So, and it's a modern, new building that is an attractive addition to the business chip on the Coney Island, because it is located on the business chip. I'm sure that the neighboring businesses in this location have welcomed the Z Best and its owners. Any business has its drawbacks. The supermarket brings the big delivery trucks, the restaurants has the exhaust from their kitchens, and the gas stations operate 24 hours a day. I think as a community, we should support and welcome new small businesses like Z Best that are improving our neighborhood and give them an opportunity to grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker.
Dear members of the panel, and I would like to express options with respect to review of all this case. I got acquainted with the owners of the...
I'm sorry, can you please state your name, sir?
My name is Alexander Bushant.
Thank you.
And I got acquainted with the owners of the Z Best Car Wash when we started campaigning supporting his enterprises. I have been living in the neighborhood, I live one and a half block from the car wash right on 87th Street. And I can acknowledge that it's a modern, well-equipped installation of this property, which provides reasonable prices and a good quality of services in the car wash. I live, so the traffic was not the point of this car wash, because down the street, like you said, you asked, what's the north of this court? It's the Nissan dealership, which is down the street, which has no cars parked right there. And we have a lot of space for cars. So we never, as a neighbor coming home, we never have a problem to get past the street, even when the car wash was open. Yeah. And it was a really shock when the car was put out of service by the OBD, the OT, the EP, and other who pried into this matter. But the substitution of the brand-new car wash was another case, when the review abuse of the power and some of the corruption or racketeering, because we feel like somebody steals something from us. So I'm not trying to get anybody's side here, but I'm on my side, and I post any sign of the corruption and support and added value in our neighborhood. And I finish. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dimitri. I'm a local resident and in the community, and also a business owner in the community. What I wanted to say is that they did a great improvement to the community. Also, wonderful job that I never experienced traffic in that area where they were operating. Their job was taken less than a minute and very, very nice service. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker. Are there any more speakers on the item? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Mag Dijalov. I'm the operator of the car wash, and I just wanted to address a couple of concerns that you guys were talking about. Like the first one, there's a computer store here, we have the owner of that store here, he can speak as well. And then there's the Nissan dealership. So we basically, I mean, the street is wide enough where, just like it's been for years and years and during our operation, the cars that are stacking up, at most, like during the winter season, which is our big season, is when, you know, all the solders on the cars, and we get a lot of cars coming into the wash. At most, we would have maybe five to seven cars parked, and they go really quick. The reason, I mean, we anticipated all these issues with the street and potential traffic, even though it's been like this for 60 years. But as Kevin mentioned, this is why we have ten spaces here in the right corner. And the car goes in really quick. And the reason we have two people, I'd be committing to two people, one is going to be taking the signatures from the person, or the other person, just like you said, he's going to be, he's going to be clipping the antenna or taking off the antenna. So we have basically two or three people doing the task so we can go in really quick. So basically, shunning out more salaries, and we have five payroll so we can, you know, so that we can go flawless, so we can minimize queuing or any other concerns. The trial court, we have a sign each day, we have signs saying, you know, do not block the street, but in addition to that, we have another person standing there making sure that the street does not get blocked. And, you know, this goes really quick. I mean, you guys would be surprised, you would actually, would go inside the operation. I mean, you'd be surprised how much this goes. It does not add to the additional traffic on the street in no means. This is a fully commercial zone. I lived in this neighborhood for 20 years before the public car wash there. And everybody's happy, the whole community is happy. I mean, there's not, we have over 600 signatures of the people that are for us. There's only one or two positions, and these are people that live on the block. I completely understand them, you know, I wouldn't want to live next to a car wash chasing food, but once we minimize the noise and we, you know, put up the wall and barriers, we're going to put in the full limits of the noise level. So, you know, we have full community board support behind us, and, I mean, everybody loves our place, so.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name is William Allen. I was here for the last meeting. I'm a resident of General Court adjacent to the auto wash. I just want to point out, we're making a big deal about this quay and the operation. Right here is Nissan dealership. These are all immediate parking, and beyond that is a bus stop. At 25 cars, which they admit could happen, and has happened, would block the bus stop and go into the intersection on Avenue Y. Okay? Now, according to city code, you're required from the entrance of a car wash off-site to have the availability of room for 10 cars. Now they're using the city, they're using the city street for those 10 cars. Coney Island Avenue is, yeah, it's wide, it's got two lanes, and it's busy, and I stressed that the last meeting. Now you're going to eliminate one lane going beyond Avenue Y and blocking up that intersection during peak operations and less peak operations, and having people try to get around. I also have, you've got this letter from Nissan, okay? Here's the business. He says his whole operation's been disrupted by this outfit. And as far as the businesses that are in the immediate area, none of them are in favor of this because they say all that traffic blocks them up, even south of it, because you have all the traffic exiting from the side of this, of this operation. Here it is here. Now you have all these kids coming out of school, you have all these people going down the street, you have all this activity, and it's like Aqueduct at the starting gate right here as they exit. So you have a problem going in, and you have a problem going out. And no amount of people put out in the street on Coney Island Avenue is going to address that problem, because it's just horrendous. This 20 minutes, this 20 seconds, what are they talking about? From the time the car gets to the curb and goes into the, into the car wash itself? Sure, that's possible, but beyond that, it's just a backup. I've sent you pictures of what the traffic looks like without the car wash, and it's horrendous. When the old business there, they complain about, pick the worst possible picture, this was, after it was closed, when they were there, it was a smaller operation, although they were on the street. And it was a different entity entirely. This is a major operation, and they admit it. Okay? I'm not saying they don't do a good job. I'm not part of that love fest, because I don't use it. I use my own hose. So it's a whole different approach. It is a problem. I just want to mention some other thing. Mr. McGrath argues to the board that his reliance relied on good faith and that the, with the Department of Buildings. My contention is that from the very beginning, they tried to perpetrate deceit, because the documents they gave to John Gallagher led him to believe that there was a less amount of time than there was when they were closed.
I'm sorry.
They have not, excuse me?
Your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, that was, I just want to say, that demand the documents, both to Gallagher and the documents for the period of time they were closed. Demand those documents.
Thank you. The next speaker.
How are you doing? My name is Al Smalldon. I'm a business owner in the community. This gentleman that just spoke, I had my business there for 28 years, I have never seen him. As far as the Nissan ownership, I'm going to speak to the owners. I am on Community Board 15, I'm on the zoning committee. I went down to Community Board 13. I'm also the vice president of Manhattan Beach Community Group. And there was not rooming stand in the support for the car wash. This gentleman made statements that the queuing interferes. If you go to any car wash on Ryder Place, which is directly a half a mile from their car wash, it blocks the intersection going on to Coney Island Avenue. If you go on to the next closest car wash on Voorhees, the car wash blocks the street. So according to Mr. Christopher Collins' statement, that didn't work, that means that we would have to practically close every car wash that's in existence as of today in New York.
Those are not before us. I think this...
Okay, so what I'd like to say is, the business has enhanced the community. It's been a car wash for an excess of 50 years. I analyze it, I've reviewed it, as I said, I'm on the zoning committee. I feel enhances the community, and some businesses around this have also stated, and which I could get documentation, that since the car wash has been closed down, the businesses has been steadily declining. And what I take objection to is, one of our local politicians, which I have conversations with them, this is an example of an assault on a small business person, because they had pressed issues that are unjustified. And yes, it's very easy to say, to come back to Kevin, let's replace it with a one-story or the type of business. But what about the hardship that these people have incurred? I myself am first generation in the United States. These people are hard-working people. I've spoken to them, and they've tried everything possible to cooperate with the neighbors, and I think they have done a good job. But this is a direct assault, which I plan on taking further step from our assemblyman, Steven Simblewitz, an assault on the small business for no reason at all. To come back to say to them, just come back with a proposal for another one-story type of business, but the hardship and the burden that's been put on these people, who are honest, hard-working business people, family people, is unjustified, absolutely unjustified. And I please would like you to really consider all these facts of letting these people operate the business, they have support from the community.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the item? Yes. You want to talk?
Just one here?
Sorry. I'm... We'll be given three minutes. Please state your name.
My name is Lois...
We'll be given three minutes. Please state your name.
My name is Lois Patawer and I live near, near the car wash, around one block away. And I know I have only three minutes and I'm sorry I missed the proceeding. I'm sorry I'm to be late. I didn't know I was coming today. Okay. We believe the neighbors, the immediate neighbors in the blocks very close to the car wash and we don't believe the car wash should be allowed to reopen because it makes a lot of noise, it hasn't been a good neighbor, it hasn't made those improvements that I, I mean, they've made a couple of improvements, but it's been very noisy. They should never have been allowed to open in the first place because they were aware that there was no car wash there for well over the two years that would be permitted. There was no, it was not open in 2007, 2008, 2009, and most of 2010 as evidenced by water bills. If they were open during that time, they should produce proof of sales taxes, federal and state taxes, or anything to show that they were open during that big gap of almost four years. And, and they are well aware that they should never have opened there in the first place because they were not permitted and that there's not, there isn't any room in front of the car wash. There's no space for cars. It has to go out onto a busy, busy, only one lane going southbound on Coney Island Avenue in that area. The cars have to jut out into the street, make problems on the sidewalk and especially in the traffic area and people can't pass and pedestrians are assaulted by chemical fumes and it's a mess and it's just not enough space there for, for such a busy car wash. And they were, they were, they claimed that they were blindsided by the city by being allowed to open and then closed, but they were, knew all along that they were not allowed to open because they knew that the, that, that there was no car wash there for four years. So I guess that's all. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Sorry, I didn't know I was coming today. A lot, few people who, few of the neighbors fell sick and were unable to come.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more speakers on this item? All right. Are there any other questions for Mr. McGrath? I know you said that you wanted more time, but this is because you're going to go into, you're going to do testing?
Yes.
I don't know how it's going to address the C finding, but--
Well, the C finding, I, I addressed and the C finding is the character of the neighborhood. When you have something--
Okay, all right.
I've also, I've also submitted two cases on this issue, which, which talk about.
In your Phase One report, the consultant notes that there is already a monitoring well in the parking areas south of the building.
Yes.
Do you know what that well is for and if it's possible to take water samples?
You'll have to come, you'll have to--
Please restate your name for the record.
We went to the D P, we tried to get records, our kind of records, unfortunately nothing was provided to us.
Do you know why that monitoring well was installed?
To tap into the reservoirs of some sort, but no, I'm not sure, no.
Because it's separate from the well that the--
That's correct.
Station uses. This is a separate thing. This is a monitoring well. That's how it's described.
That's correct.
So I would, you know, my thinking would be that it was installed perhaps when the 7-Eleven did remediation or something like that.
No, it's not near the 7-Eleven. It's on the property for, for the car wash. It's a well that receives the water from the car wash and before it goes into the public sewer, so it fills up and it drops--
So it's not connected to the groundwater system at all?
No, it's not connected. It's, it's a, it's to dispose of the--
Okay.
And sort of clarify it before it goes into the city system.
Is it the backflow device?
And then it's, and then a company comes and takes out the residue from that well periodically.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
I have the Jack Freeman, who has given his report, but it's of course subject to the assumptions that we talked about today.
Right, I just want to reiterate our concerns just on the A finding again. I think, you know, you'd have to document it. I think also clearly document the costs and the reasons why you believe this building cannot be reused. I think you made a very general statement and also identify and give us a clear understanding why the cost for removing this building, as well as the filtration system is going to cost you upward of a close to $100,000, which you've included.
We'll get--
All right, I think we've already raised our concerns and you can respond back to that. So we'll give you, you said six weeks, correct?
Yes.
All right, so if you can submit to us on June 10th, we'll review this on, we'll hear this on June 24th.
Item number 12, count the number 3, 1112 BZ, 964, 964 Dean Street, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board, Eric Palatnik. We attended your review session yesterday and we are in agreement with your board, partially, to eliminate the first floor from the proposal and to convert the first floor, retain the first floor for a permitted commercial or other use that would be permitted there. It is in a manufacturing district, but we don't believe it would attract manufacturing uses. So we do agree to that. We would like to discuss with your board, and we don't mean any disrespect to your board, we've heard what you said yesterday, your review session, about the second floor. Because the, the unique conditions that we're talking about at the property, it's primarily the loss factor, which I know, Madam Chair, the board questioned yesterday and we, the expert, David Sargoy, who's the real estate consultant who prepared that communication to your board, is here today to talk to you about that as it--
I think what we want to see is more like hard evidence, which is why can't you document these other uses in the surrounding area and show that they, they tend to be in the range of 500 to 3,000 square feet?
Fine, I'm sorry, I'm--
500 square feet to 3,000 is what?
Oh, that's, yes, is what, 500, 3,000 is what David was commenting. Yes, and David will, will talk to you about that and he'll be able to--
I, I think we'd like some, not just talk about it, but actually document for us that these are, this is the square footage that is seen in commercial uses in the surrounding area.
I know David can document that for your board and I, he will document it for your board and he'll also talk to you about it. Today, if you'd like, he can come up right now. Would you like to start with that discussion right now if it pleases the board?
Well, I, I, we've, we've read the statement. If there's anything more to add, otherwise we just want to have actual data.
Okay, well, there is a little bit more to add. I'd like him to speak to that. So I wanted, this would be a good topic about David.
Hello, my name is David Sargoy. I'm the director of Brown Harris Stevens Commercial Real Estate Division in the metro area. And what we did is we took a look at, at the building. I've been in the market for 34 years, so I'm fairly familiar with the market. We took a look at the whole building and the uniqueness of the building. You know, right now, the first floor and the second floor, with the first floor, because it's elevated, it's a little bit difficult. You know, we'd eliminate retail, so we could only go for office use. We have an elevator that's all the way in the back of the building on the first floor. And in order to convert the first and the second floor to office space, it means creating handicap bathrooms, two means of ingress and egress on the floor, and it's going to create a very large loss factor. Loss factor comes to 39% on the first floor and 27% on the second floor. Typical loss factors in the market are ranging 15 to 20, except if you're in downtown Brooklyn, like in the high rises on Montague Street or Court Street. The building also has, you know, it's off-street, we have no parking at the building also. I will be able to document what you brought up, Madam Chairman, I guess, about the typical tenancy that's in the market. Presently, within a mile of this building, there's 250,000 square feet of vacant space, which I'll be able to document for you, building by building, what the asking prices are and what the loss factors are also. And the way this building would have to lay out in order to have handicap bathrooms, two means of ingress and egress to beat building codes, especially on the second floor, with a very large loss factor, the only type of tenancy is going to be small tenants that are the most cost-conscious tenants in the market and don't like paying for too much more than what they want to use. In addition, right down the block from us is 1,000 Dean Street with 140,000 square feet of space with a lot of abatements and goodies, you know, which is enabling them to offer a fairly low rental rate. What we will put together is everything that the board wants, showing all the vacancy in the area, other buildings, loss factors, what would be, we would be competing against trying to find tenants for this building. And that's how I make a living, is leasing space and finding tenants for buildings. And I can tell you, very, very difficult for the second floor. The first floor is also going to be very difficult, but you know, is much more possible because we have a little bit more flexibility.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? All right, I just want to comment about the, the elevator you, which you said is way back in the building, but it's not really way back in the building.
Well, most, if you go into most office building lobbies, the elevator is right in the front. This is approximately, I forget the exact square footage, going all the way back to the left--
It's about 20, 40 feet or something, 40, 50 feet.
Right. So what's going to happen is if you have a multi, multi-tenant office building, you're going to have to put a corridor going all the way back to where this elevator is because tenants need to reach the elevator that are on upper floors. In addition then, for the second floor, you're going to have to create a corridor getting to another, another staircase to have two means of ingress and egress, which effectively cuts the space in half. And it makes it very difficult for a lease-up and very difficult, and both floors now, you got a 28% loss factor, a 27, two-on-two, and a 39% loss factor on the first floor. Not going to be able to get tenants to eat that. They just will not pay for that kind of a loss factor. It's going to make the building--
Can you just explain to me why an open office plan doesn't work?
An open office plan? It might work on the first floor, you know, that's possible, but it's still going to, you have to find tenants that are willing to, you know, come to this location.
But, okay, that's a different thing. I'm just trying to understand in terms of the building itself and, because we're not talking about, it's not like 15,000 square feet that they have to occupy. We're talking about, I think the floor plans are like 6,700 square feet.
Correct.
I'm just, I just, I don't know. We've talked about a range of 3, 500 to 3,000. I'm just questioning. And your proposal is, is to break it up into tiny, tiny spaces, I don't know, 800 square feet or something. I'm just wondering about why you can't just rent them as an open floor for the first two floors and you won't have a, you won't have that factor, the efficiency factor will be higher because you don't have to put all these corridors and why that wouldn't work? Okay, Commissioner?
I, I, I think I agree with you in that. I think that the whole loss factor argument really hinges on the other argument that you put forth, that users in this area only want small spa, spaces. So I think that if you could document that users are looking for a maximum of 1,000 square feet, then I can see why this floor plan would make sense. But absence that backup information, then I also don't understand why you would need to have all of this snaking corridor going around that's providing all of these different entry points to all these micro offices, so to speak.
Eric Palatnik. David is, is going to get you that information and I think that what'll help the board a lot too, is there's been a lot of press about the Butler Building in 1,000 Dean Street. That building has been carved up into the small spaces that you are asking about. Also has a beer garden, a food court, onsite deliveries, a restaurant--
Well, that's, I think we just want you to document, document these uses and document the square footage for these uses and that will basically do it.
We'd be happy to.
And we'll find, we'll be able to--
Analyze it from there.
Analyze it and do it within a certain radius so we're, we're not picking and choosing the buildings that work for you, but give us the full set of types of uses there.
We'd be happy to.
Okay. All right, just, but on, on another issue, which has to do, I'm pleased that you're at least looking at the ground floor and as--
Yes, we knew that was important to the board.
But, but in terms of your building study, can you redo that? Because it's, I'm not convinced that this building's unique because the study that was provided talks about factors that are not related to this, the heart--
Yes, when we had started the application, obviously a lot of the discussion and the format of the application was about non-conforming manufacturing uses and that's where a lot of the information was presented from. Over the course of the past few weeks, it's shifted to eliminate manufacturing, go primarily to an office discussion.
Well, I think some of your arguments were the same even previously. It's just there's a bit of a disconnect and I think what we'd want to understand is, as was mentioned, that most of these buildings apparently have their elevators close to the front, which I don't know, and, but that's one of the points that were made and that they are, they lend themselves to having smaller floor plates while this one doesn't. And the other issues were, I guess, the floor-to-ceiling height and, and the parking, which still seems to me a bit nebulous in terms of clearly making the connection--
It's not our main, the parking is not, it's not really our argument, I think--
It's sort of a secondary argument.
Well, I think what David and everybody is trying to, to communicate to the board is that we're not on the beaten path here. So, transportation--
All right, but, and my concern is this, that it seems, this is what I think for me, I, I need to understand, which is the issues why this building cannot be occupied is not because there's so much space in the neighborhood that it competes with everything else, but it's the fact that this site, this building itself has problems that don't, don't allow it to be--
Understood, I understood.
--occupied feasibly.
We'll make that correlation.
It's not that general market, okay, we have--
No, we understand.
--so much space and this has to compete. I understand, even in that competition, yes, the lesser spaces are worse off than, you know, the better spaces that have been newly built or recently retrofitted, but still I think that should be more of a secondary argument.
Understood.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, oh, yes, yes.
I just have a financial question for that second report and, and the question is, is the seller's space that is used as storage in the proposed, is that accounted for when you're setting your sales prices? Because I'm looking at your, your assumptions page and it's, it looks like it's, net residential square foot is only 23,374, so it seems like it's not at all taking into account selling that space, but is it bumping up the sales price per square foot?
Robert Paul's, Robert B. Paul's LLC. Nice being--
I know, it's been a long time.
Thank you, yeah, for unfortunate reasons.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
The pricing structure of this for the upper floor residential, this last iteration, because of their, their walk-up floors, the space in the basement is sort of been an offset to what would be a, a discount for, for a walk-up series of units. As regards the commercial space, and we'll identify it, I mean, we've got pretty much an idea of whatever building in the area is, how much space it's got, how many tenants there are and what the range of tendencies are. And I think what you'll find is, is that if you got to take a financial risk on commercial tenancy, I'd love that first floor to be at grade because you're going to have a retail tenant, it offsets a, mitigates an awful lot of sins, but it isn't that. It's literally several feet above grade. Yeah, I would tell you, you know, your inclination is, well, let's take a shot on that and see if we can get a tenant, because if you can get a single tenant to take 6,700, 6,800, 7,000 square feet, yes, you can mitigate the issues regarding loss factor. I don't know if there are two tenants out there like that. It's a, it's a negative that you can't prove, but we can show that the archetypal tenant in this area is significantly smaller than that. And if, once you have to go upper floor, have a separate egress and bifurcate the space in some manner for more than one tenant, your loss factor increases exponentially. And so that second floor, which from a residential standpoint would mitigate some of the issues, from a commercial standpoint exacerbates the issues. The ground floor, there are some possibilities on the ground floor for the mere fact that it's A1 floor. B, you would control all of that space save for the entry corridor to the elevator, which would be for, could not only be for residential purposes because you could flip things. you could flip things, it would mitigate the pricing structure on the residential because now you have elevator access to the upper floor residential. And so that would, from an economic standpoint, start offsetting some of the inherent difficulties to this specific building, because if it were like 1,000 Dean Street, at a size of 100 and some odd thousand square feet, you could probably get Goldman Sachs money and Incubator money and a variety of other programs and, and benefits that were necessary to make these things work. Building isn't big enough for that, it's sort of a twixt and tween, and so we'll provide that information. As regards the current pricing, once, if we can get and configure the building with the ground floor for the, what I'll call the, the now elevated residential, those prices would, would rise because they're, they're based on being a walk-up, and they're not discounted nearly as much as you would for a walk-up because the fourth floor is quite high up, because you have some storage in the basement, there is some ability to, to have some minor additional space, although a lot of that is commercial storage as well.
Right, but if, if you are working on your proposed, there is no residential in that, the revised proposed...
That's correct.
...that was presented prior to this, so there would be the elevator.
Yes.
So the question that I had about the seller's space being accounted for, is it accounted for?
It is accounted for in the pricing structure, not in the square footage.
Okay, yeah, if you could just write that into your narrative, basically, so then it looks as if it's been considered.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
No problem whatsoever.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Are there any more, any speakers on this item? All right, we'll give you an opportunity to pull that material together.
Thank you, if I could ask for two months, just because I know the building study, we've already, we've attempted, it's very difficult to gather all the information, so I'd like more time so we could extend some resources on it, maybe we could have 45 days to submit or...
Well, either we can bring you back at the end of June or in July.
If we could submit the end of June and we'll come back in July, that would be great.
Okay, so July 1st, and we'll have the hearing on July 15th.
Thank you.
And can you also, just in your next iteration to us, because you'll be analyzing both ones, just to make sure that from a financial, you'll be analyzing both the, the one-story as well as the two-story of conforming uses.
One-story on the two-story commercial, you said, right?
Yes, commercial, conforming use.
There's a cough at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Item number 13, calendar number 34712BZ, 4231 Union Street, Queens, Lofts of Vincent Alcatara.
The applicant asked for an adjournment, the submission date is April 29th, and the hearing on May 13th.
On May?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, the hearing date?
May 13th.
Item number 14, calendar number 6513BZ, 123 Franklin Avenue, Brooklyn, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, good morning again, Eric Palatnik. We attended and we watched your review session, the cameras are fantastic, it really gives a lot of information. I apologize, I didn't realize you switched your system.
Oh.
Not that I don't pay attention to the staff, I apologize, though. I'll start with the simplest discussion first. At the review session yesterday, I think that Madam Chair had made the comment that you, you thought the building was not fully detached, which was our previous assertion.
Okay, this photograph is much better.
Yeah, the photograph, I realized the problem, we had given you some photographs to show building heights, and when I looked at that, I saw it was taken from the angle to the left, and it'd give the appearance visually that it was connected. That condition, and we have Mr. Friam Goldstein who's here today, he's the engineer who prepared the report, and I'd like him to speak, because that condition of it being fully detached, the building is 127 years old, it was built in 1887, and it's not the lack of, of maintenance that's, that's caused the building, although I'm sure there's been some lack of maintenance through the years, but the building only has a lifespan of, of 75 years to begin with, it's nearly double that lifespan.
Now, don't these, all these other buildings, are the same vintage?
They do, but the difference is, is that this is freestanding, and the other ones are not, and consequently, as the other ones start to shift, which they all start to shift, I'm sure you're all familiar with, with homes that start to shift and, and other buildings and structures, those have the ability to lean on the property next to them. The rest of the block, most of it is actually fully attached on both sides, it's only the home to our right that appears to be the sister building of our home, of our building, which we'll discuss in a second with the zoning lot issue, that is of the exact same vintage, it appears, but some appear to be newer, and all of them are fully attached on both sides except for that one to the right. So we respectfully submit that that's what's caused the condition.
Okay, but can you document that for us? Because I know that Mr. Goldstein had identified like five other buildings, but I think, I'd like to really see a more detailed map showing where these buildings are and showing, you know, photographs, or explain what the vintage is and the similarities, and then speak to the issue, because you seem to be relying on one singular issue, which is that the other buildings are attached or semi-detached and therefore don't have the potential, or they haven't suffered the potential of shifting foundations...
Correct.
...and therefore destabilized buildings.
To even give you more in your own head, a little more comfort zone, when you look at this picture that I just passed, this, actually, here's another picture. The, the other picture I'm passing up is taken from Google Street View, just focuses more on what I call the sister building, which is on the property to the right, I'd like you to get that in your hands.
Okay, so the sister building is adjacent?
It's, it's almost, it's sister building, now, if you look at that building, that's connected and it's perfectly straight, if you compare that to the photo of the building to the, our building, you could see our building angling, you could visibly see it in the photo. Now, what I'm calling out here is, as you know, we're about to lead into the next discussion, both buildings were in common ownership for, until 1984, which we didn't include in our papers, and I'll pass that up as well, so what I'm trying to say is presumably they were both maintained by the same entity, and you, you can imagine that the conditions that have occurred over the years did not occur to one and did occur to the other, I don't know if it's entirely due to ignoring a building, because they were both under the same ownership, but rather the separation...
I understand that, I'm just asking for, this, you talked about other buildings, but I just want to understand that.
We'll be happy to play out, play it out with the map.
Just identify all these other buildings that are similar vintage and, you know, amongst these few blocks, because there are a lot of green buildings that are occupied, and maybe your building is not occupied, but I, if there's some merit to that argument, then I think, you know, we'd accept it, but we just want to understand how common it is.
Understood, we'll provide that to you.
Okay.
The second discussion that you, you brought up with the board at the review session yesterday was the once-common ownership of all three lots, I forgot what the middle one is, but now it's Lot 9, which is our property, and Lot 108, which is the 12 feet...
But that lot has been subdivided.
Yes, but since you raised that question, I've been, I've been speaking to people all around the city for the past day on this...
All I want you to, we asked you to document this, I think it's, it's not...
What are you looking for?
Well, for one thing is that this lot, as of '60, maybe up till 1984, it seems...
Yes.
...was one lot, which is 75 feet by 100.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Then it's hard for you to make the argument...
It was not one lot, it was under common ownership.
Okay, it's uncommon.
It wasn't one lot.
But if you look at the CFO, the CFO says these other properties on the same lot.
No, it actually references, uh...
Why is there...
Three different, it references three different lots on the CFO.
Yes, it does.
It references all three lots.
Right, but wasn't it functioning as one zoning lot?
No.
But it is, because the parking is, is being provided for the homes on the same zoning lot, it couldn't have been on another zoning lot, it's one zoning lot, so leave...
There was no required parking at the time.
I understand that, but if you, I'm just going by the CFO, it seems like it's one zoning lot, and the CFO seems to recognize it.
I'd like to submit, our, our theory...
But even if that's the case, you've still subdivided a lot, because one, the lot in between has been subdivided into two tiny portions, and I don't know what happens to the other...
12, 12 and a half feet on each side, 12 and a half feet went to the one on the left, 12 and a half feet went to the one on the right, and they were sold off like that. That's a lawful zoning lot, and I, I don't think we've created a, a narrow lot by doing that, I think the lots existed...
Well, you have created a narrow lot, you may, you may...
If anything, we've, we've expanded the lot by adding the adjacent property.
I'm not convinced by this, I'm not, I, I'm...
Let me see that.
I, I don't understand the issue, the three lots were functioning together, that's the size of the lot, the, the CFO recognizes as these three as one zoning lot.
No, the CFO, it does represent them as one property, but it doesn't know where it is to say it's one zoning lot, but I'd like to make it clear for the board perhaps, is we could submit to you a brief on the issue and...
Okay, that's fine.
...to go position in writing, so that way we play it out a little, this 1210 is the definition of a zoning lot, is always a debated issue.
Okay, I, I agree, you can take a look at that, and, but just document to us this history, and I guess I'm hearing now, 1984, they split ones up?
It was split in 84, that was the year, and before that, it was historically, as far back as we could tell, all ran together, the properties all ran together.
And why, and your, that adjacent portion, which is 12 feet, what happens to that lot?
I'm not sure I follow your question.
That lot has now been combined with the other lot?
There's no, there hasn't been a formal request to real property yet to merge those two lots, but the architect is here, he was waiting for an action by the board, but we can merge that lot now.
Not the lot for this property, but the, the leftover lot.
The left, on the right side? I don't know what that property owner has done with it, you're talking about the property owner of Lot 7, and you're talking about Lot, Lot 7 has the, the house on it, the brown house.
I'm talking about the lot which is now 12 feet wide, which is now flailing in the winds, I don't know what's...
No, there's two 12 feet wide, two 12 and a half...
Yes, one you're incorporating into your, your lot.
Right, you're talking about the one to the right of that?
Yes, exactly.
Lot 7, I don't know the status of that, I could find out, it, it does run with, excuse me, Lot 8, does run with Lot 7, which has the brown building on it that I just sent up to you, the system.
But they haven't merged as a zoning lot?
I don't know, we'll find out if you, if you'd like, we could find out.
Well, I think at, at the very minimum, if that lot is out there by itself, not being merged, the same argument you're telling us, that your lots were sep, were not a part of the same zoning lot, then I think you should at least identify that lot in your analysis.
We'd be happy to.
When you look at small lots, because it hasn't been so far.
We'd be happy to.
Okay, all right, I think those were really kind of the threshold issues. Commissioners, any questions? All right, can you also provide us of a scenario of a three-story building?
Yes.
You knew I'd ask that, right?
I had a feeling you would ask, yes. We have submitted to you...
Or at least bring the height down, because recently we approved something, which is, we got the height down to about 36 feet, and try and bring your building down, the height.
Okay, I'll try and bring it down.
Okay, and in fact, show us what the three-story is, so that's one issue, and just on your plans, I think you've created these courts on either side.
Yes, in the rear.
Well, they're on the side.
Yes, on the side.
And are those complying courts? They're not, so I don't think we'd want to see...
I have the architect here who can...
Right, I don't think we want to see a new residential building that doesn't comply with regulations of a residential building.
We'll, we'll amend that.
Okay, so if you can take a look at that, and just, it should be complying with all light and air issues and all regulations that normally apply to a residential building, and for that purpose, can you please just analyze that in a zoning analysis?
We'd be happy to.
Okay, like an R6 or something. Okay, any other questions? Any speakers on this item? All right, why don't we bring you back in June?
That'd be great.
Can you submit on May 27? You can continue hearing, we can, we can have a continuing hearing on June 10th.
Would it be possible, can we go a couple of weeks further, if that would work? Just because I have a few things after that.
You can submit on June 10th, we can have the hearing on June 24th.
Thank you, that'd be better, thank you.
Item number 15, calendar number 21313BZ, 2858 through 60, Victory Boulevard, Staten Island, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good afternoon, Adam Rothberg.
Mr. Rothberg, are you ready to submit your papers today?
Uh, we are not.
Okay, so we'll give you a week, May 6th? It's just design, it's been taking very long.
It's embarrassing.
It is embarrassing.
It's embarrassing for me to, to look at a list, list like that, I'm dealing with an architect, he's drawing, if we could give, if the board would give us two weeks, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, that's fine, so why don't you submit May 13th, and we'll have the hearing on May 20th.
Thank you very much.
Item number 16, calendar numbers 21613BZ and 21713A, 750 Barkley Avenue, Staten Island, Rampoule Associate Architects.
This case has, it's been adjourned, the submission date is April 29th, and we'll have the hearing on May 13th. They've in fact already submitted.
Item number 17, calendar number 250213BZ, 1221 East 22nd Street, Brooklyn, Lofts of Frederick A. Becker.
Good afternoon, Lyra J. Altman from the Law Office of Frederick A. Becker.
All right, any questions? I think the commissioners were satisfied, any speakers on this item? We can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
We'll decide this on May 13th.
Thank you.
Item number 18, calendar number 25313BZ, 66-31 Boot Street, Queens, Eric Palatnik.
Hello, Eric Palatnik, we amended our statements, we apologize, and we submitted that electronically yesterday.
Have the commissioners had a chance to review that?
Yes.
Vice Chair, it's okay?
It was coherent.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the pages were numbered.
Are there any other questions?
No.
Any speakers on this item? Okay, we can close the hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
We'll decide this also on May 13th.
Thank you.
Item number 19, calendar number 27513BZ, 404 through 406 Broadway, Manhattan, Washore Bernstein.
Julia Young for the applicant.
All right, any questions? All right, I just want, yes, it's for this? Our department signed off, so that's good, I just want to confirm that the, this, whatever signage doesn't, either has received approval from landmarks or doesn't require approval from landmarks?
So we confirmed to project architect that it doesn't have to, well, the landmark's approval is not required for...
Because it falls within whatever their rules are that exempts them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, well, we'll note that as well.
Okay, and we'd like to submit it in writing.
I beg your pardon?
We'd like to submit that in writing.
You can submit that in writing to us, if you can submit that to us next week on May 6th.
Okay.
We can vote this out on May 20th. Are there any speakers? Okay, close this hearing.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Call 20 and 21 together, then?
Yes, call 20 and 21 together.
New cases, item number 20, calendar number 27712BZ, 1776 East Chester Road, DeBronz, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector, and item number 21, calendar number 25113BZ, 1240 Waters Place, DeBronz, Rothberg, Rothberg Inspector.
Good afternoon, Adam Rothberg.
All right, we had two questions, Commissioner Montanez, and then Commissioner Hinkson.
I think I answered my own question, I think in your statement, you're talking about the lot...
Correct.
And in the parking analysis, he was just talking about the building.
Correct, he neglected, he neglected the...
Two different numbers.
The outdoor, the outdoor spaces, which are not...
But in the total, right.
But are on the part of the zoning lot.
Okay.
All right, that was clarified. Commissioner Hinkson?
Yes, I just had questions about the lighting and also about the parapet, the edge conditions at the roof.
Well, I think there is a detail on the drawings with regard to the parapet and the lighting. We can certainly add a note. There are no residences anywhere close to this. But we could certainly add a note that that lighting will be designed to be confined to the tax lot. And I think the parapet.
Can you point me to where the parapet?
Yeah, I thought on the, well, as far as just the, I mean, the section shows the relative height of the parapet. We could show some more detail on that.
But the idea is just it's a standard height.
Yeah, I'm sure it's a standard.
So there's no screening per se, but just the parapet. I think that's what they have, right?
I mean, it's going to be 100%. It's a, I mean, there is a note that it's a precast concrete. So it's 100% opaque. It's.
And it's 42 inches.
You know, I'm sure it's designed as a standard, but we can make sure that's reflected in the plan.
Yeah, you've got sections, but I don't think you actually, and you actually show where it's circled, where you should have the detail. It's just not on the drawing.
That's fine. We'll add, we'll add on one of those. We'll revise. If we could just revise one of the sheets for each set of plans with the lighting note and the parapet detail.
That'd be good. All right, are there any other questions? Any speakers on this item? Any speakers? All right, I think we can close the hearing. That's both cases. And we'll leave the record open for you to submit. If you can submit to us on May 27, we can vote this out on June 10.
We could submit earlier if it's.
This is good. Okay. Make a motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 22, calendar number 2-13BZ, 438 Tarjay Street, Staten Island, Alfonso Duarte.
Good afternoon, Men Chairman Commissioners, Alfonso Duarte for the petition. This application basically is to legalize an enlargement to an existing one-story building. The enlargement was there when the owner purchased the property in 2001 and consists basically of 500 square feet with the existing legal portion approximately 1,100 square feet. The legal portion was built in 1947 as a auto glass shop with accessory kitchen, which normally would fit in, I believe, Use Group 7 in today's zoning, and was built in 1947 under the 1916 zoning resolution. The site is triangular in area and is basically 2,060 square foot in area. When the owner had saved up and obtained his financial backing to finish off the structure, he was advised by his architect that he had to come before the board to obtain a variance. Tarjay Street is not your typical residential street. It's 80-foot wide. It's got parking on both sides. It's two lanes. And when I was there in the afternoon, they certainly did not live within a 30-mile speed limit and really is not a street that you would find in a typical residential area. As far as uniqueness, I believe the lot is unique in that it's triangular in area, its shape and its size. There are other lots similar to this in the area. Adjacent, there's one that was completed under the old zoning, 1916, which certainly could not fit in with today's R3A zoning.
Could you do us a favor by just looking at a certain stretch of Tarjay Street? I mean, maybe beyond the 400-foot radius and identify the other triangular sites and explain to us the size of those sites and what uses they have on them?
I could do that, yes.
Commissioner Ali Brown, I know you had asked.
Yeah, that was my question because you had referenced two similar sites in the immediate area, but didn't give us any information as to the size of them, the angles of the triangle.
When I was last there, one was vacant, one of the triangle ones. The other one was completed, as I said, under the 1916 zoning resolution. And we have ours, basically.
Are they larger sites, though? More square footage? Smaller?
Well, then I can outline. I will outline that.
If you could do that.
I can do that.
And just, you know, instead of taking 400 feet, take maybe 800 feet on either side of your site along Tarjay and then identify the triangular sites.
Okay.
And then the square, you know, the lot size and then what's.
What it's finished with and.
What is developed as.
I can do that.
Okay, good.
I'll try to do it anyway.
I'm sure you can.
As far as the neighborhood character, the essential character of the neighborhood is really not being changed because basically that zone was business under the 1916 zoning resolution. And there are several commercial buildings that are existing along Tarjay Street. And as I said, this structure has been existing since 2001. There have been no complaints or violations against this building. Although I noticed that there are two violations that were issued prior to the present owner. Fines have been paid. It's just administratively to get them removed from the computer. The hardship was not self-created by the owner or previous owner, but the hardship really is based on two things. One is the size and shape of the property. And number two is the parameters of the R3A zoning. Impossible to make that site comply or conform with the requirements today, even if the entire building was demolished. The minimum variance, I would say, is minimum. Anything else less than this really would not economically be feasible to accomplish. And as far as financials, I have the financial analyst here that, Marlene, if you want to come up.
Right.
I believe there may be some questions.
There are some questions, but just.
Marlene, come on.
But right, just before she comes up, just a question. The retail, the additional space that you're asking for, is that a separate retail space or is it a part of?
Well, I discussed this with the owner. He feels that he would like to have the option of either renting it out to a Use Group 6 use. And if that doesn't work, then he would incorporate it into his food market that he has now.
Okay, I know that some of the board members had concerns about this. What and the concern was that is preferable to be an enlargement of existing use?
To me, it would be.
Because.
For one thing, the signage that you have now, I think, does not comply. It's very large signage.
Well, what he has now is Use Group 6 is the food market.
Right, but the signage for that market and then you would be, it does not comply with the 150 square feet. I don't believe. It's over the whole.
The legal portion is legal nonconforming. The legal portion, because that was built under the.
Right. Does that mean that it can have whatever signage it requests?
No, but the signage may be grandfathered because there are no rules that, unlike what the board has done, is we impose C1 signage. But are these old signs from grandfather signs or they're just illegal signs?
No, the existing building is grandfathered in because of the zoning. The portion that we're asking for the variance is the extension that was put on.
I understand that.
At some time.
But Mr. Duarte, the signs that are associated with the legal portion, do you know whether those?
The signs?
The signs.
The signs.
The signage, yes. Is that?
I don't think they were filed, no. But we would comply with the C1 area for the signs for the.
Okay, so you would agree to doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not, we don't know where the signs came from.
Signs would be changed to comply with the C1 district requirements.
Can you, in your next iteration, just provide us with a drawing showing what signage you're planning to propose for the two uses together?
Okay, I'll talk to the architect and we'll work up something. Okay, for C1 area.
Right, I think the board wants it to be very simple.
Yes, yes.
Right?
Okay.
All right, should we have Ms. Sigmund come up? Yes.
Next, Newton, Marlene Sigmund.
Should we speak of the overall or should I go into individuals?
I think the overalls.
Could I just add just a few things reviewing this? This case was filed in '11, so a little review was required. And I noticed a couple of things. I just want to bring to the small things. In the spreadsheet, there's a section that says NOI after mortgage. It should just say NOI because mortgage was not taken into account. Where it says income after debt service also, should not say after debt service because there is no debt service taken into account, so it'd just be income after expenses or net income. One further point that I, when reviewing the case, that I just wanted to add was that it occurred to me that one of the expenses I did not include was if the extension is not approved, they would have to tear that down. And, you know, they can't just leave that vacant building.
But before we get to that, I think one, a more critical, I think one of the issues that we raised is that this site should not be valued with that illegal construction to begin with. So what you've done is you've taken the land value and then you've included the value of these two buildings. One, they're depreciated differently.
Right, right, right.
But there's no basis to put value on a portion of the site or a portion of the building, which is not legal.
Interesting point.
So I think you should take that out. So that may address something else.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Also, especially since in that scenario, you also have $62,000 added in on top of that for new construction, for new foundation, new exterior walls.
Yeah, that's for the proposed.
Right, but you also have it included in your site. You're valuing it as a depreciated building at 85% of these.
No, the 62,000 is for the extension.
Right, but your extension is, it seems to already be included in your starting site value.
Right, that was only on the existing without the 62.
Right, but honestly, because it's legalization, it hasn't been approved. It should be valued as if it isn't even there.
Okay.
And then you will add it in as new construction. This is what we want to do.
Okay, I see. So what you're saying is that I should not include it at all in the existing, but in the proposed, include as if you're building that building again?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And similarly, for the analysis of the building, which doesn't have this enlargement, the pre-enlargement analysis, both the site value should have it reduced, but you shouldn't also include costs to demolish that piece because that was done illegally. And the board is not going to take into, the board is not going to favor a situation where somebody builds something and then claims that the hardships associated with tearing it down.
I did not include that. I just mentioned that. That would be a concern. But okay, I understand.
At the beginning of your presentation, you said you wanted to add it in, but I'm saying don't add it in.
Okay.
Okay, so then we can see the analysis of both these scenarios again, which is the pre-enlargement and the proposal.
Right.
Which includes the enlargement.
Right, and then for the threshold, I guess, of showing that a single-family home wouldn't work, we felt that it would be important to also give us some sort of a narrative and a plan as to how a home with a very small footprint like that would not be a marketable home.
Okay.
To go along with your analysis. But then I was not very clear on your analysis either because you changed the site value. You changed the land value. All of a sudden, that goes up to $155,000, but I'm not really sure why. And then you also demolished the existing building, but you're also adding in a depreciated building value as well. And I'm not quite sure why you're adding in a depreciated building value if you are demolishing.
Yeah, I think that had to do with some spacing, so I went through that analysis.
Oh, okay, all right.
It was, yeah, I looked at that again and said.
And I'm also not sure why your land value has gone up.
Well, it actually didn't. It's just that the.
Oh, it's just they're out of line?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I used the same land value for all of this.
Okay, all right, good. So and I think just on that point, Mr. Duarte, it's worthwhile if we just have a sketch which shows what the residential would look like.
Oh, that had not been submitted?
It, well, we've seen a.
Probably a zoning analysis.
Just an outline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think the point is that once you actually try and design a building.
Right.
It's essentially not going to work.
Exactly.
Because not only is it very small, it's also triangular. And you'll get all these spaces at these corners, which are essentially not buildable. So I think it just will reinforce your argument that tearing down this building and trying to construct a residential building isn't feasible.
Right. Could I just ask one question? Inasmuch as these numbers go back, doesn't it make sense to update them to? Or should I just use the existing numbers?
Well, it seems to me since it's changing quite a bit, why don't we just?
Since you're redoing it.
Yes, since you're redoing even the basic, which is the site value, why don't you just upgrade it or update it rather?
No problem.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, any other comments? Okay. Any speakers on this item? Mr. Duarte, should we bring you back in June?
Sometime in June would be fine.
Okay, okay. Can you submit on May, sorry, June 10?
Submit them in May, what's that?
Sorry, June 10. Can you?
Submit them by June 10?
Yes. And then we can have the hearing on June 24.
Okay, June 10 and June 21. Thank you very much.
All right, yes, Ms. Sigmund, you want to say something? We could, yes, we could do, we can bring you back in July. So we could say submit by July 1 and we can have you the hearing on July 15.
Okay.
Okay.
July 1 and July 15.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Have a nice day.
Item number 23, calendar number 31913BZ, 1800 Park Avenue, Manhattan, Herrick Feinstein.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Mitch Corby. I'm here with Langin Engineering, Jack Freeman, my colleague Jennifer Dixon, and William Wallace IV from the Continuing Company, our client. First, I'd like to thank the staff at the risk of sounding patronizing. This application moved very quickly and I appreciate that. I think everyone on the board and the staff understood that this is a critical project for the East Harlem community and our timing is such that, well, our timing is what it is. And so I very much appreciate it being put on so quickly and the analysis being done so quickly. And in that regard, I realize that this is not exactly or at all necessarily connected to the board's review or analysis. But this project has received extraordinary level of support in the East Harlem community. And I hope it's okay if I just take 30 seconds and mention the fact that everyone from New York City EDC to the Community Board, to the Harlem Community Development Corporation, the Upper Manhattan Empowerment Zone folks is not only enthusiastic about this project, but anxious to make it happen. It's unusual, in fact, to have, you know, this level of support for new development and a new project. I think it's in part because we're doing a rental project, rental development. We'll have 20% of the units targeted to 50% of the adjusted median income. So it also has, as you know, a significant retail component. And if you've been to the site, you know that's going to be critical. This will have a, I hope this doesn't sound as hyperbole because I don't mean it that way. This will have a transformative effect on this corner of East Harlem. If you come off Metro North, if you come off the Lexington Avenue line and you turn west, you know what it feels like on this site. And on that stretch of 125th Street. This project will really do something very special for the site. Let me speak about your executive session yesterday because we, of course, attended and recognized there were a couple of issues. I think the ones that came up about the financial analysis are fairly straightforward. It can be addressed very quickly. I'm going to touch on them briefly and, of course, Jack will emphasize them where necessary. The only way to resolve our hardship is to place retail on the second floor. I think that came up, and if we need to clarify that in a follow-up statement, we'll do that. I know that came up yesterday. The development rights that come from the podiatry school on our zoning lot is necessary to relieve our hardship. A smaller building without those development rights will not work and will not be viable. And again, if necessary, we can further clarify and emphasize the point. In our analysis, we speak about a typical building. And I think there was some concern as to whether the typical building, because so many typical buildings in New York do have foundation costs that are certain, that are elevated because of the need to do supportive elements. Indeed, our typical building does have those costs. We didn't remove from our typical building costs associated with a supportive foundation. And again, if necessary, we'll emphasize that. Lastly, on the financial analysis, the text in our submission having to do with the cost estimates isn't quite right. I think we overstated something. That will be fixed. Jack's analysis doesn't do that and is correct and completely kosher, so to speak, in that regard. So I don't think there, I know, I'm confident there are no issues there.
Right, I think I noted that. It was more that the narrative had some mismatch. But actually, Mr. Freeman's financial analysis seemed correct and.
Right on, as per usual, yeah. Thank you. I think the key issue, of course, is parking. And I know the Chair and others discussed this yesterday. We're at 18%. An analysis based on census data done by Sam Schwartz LLC shows a higher parking demand. When you do an analysis, as you all know, on census data, you're doing it based on existing buildings. This building is unique. Of course, it's unique to meet the findings. But it's unique in a different way, in the sense that it's right, of course, adjacent to Metro North, right next to the Lexington Avenue line. That lends the hardship argument, which I know the board is completely okay with. That is to say, we have subsurface conditions. We have the support issues that we have vis-à-vis the subway line and Metro North and the Second Avenue subway. But the fact that we're so close to Metro North, it's five minutes to Grand Central. And so therefore, this building, unlike other buildings in the census tract, we believe will actually have a parking demand that's lower than our own analysis shows because our own analysis is based on census data. So we're at 123 spaces. That's what we're providing, which is very close to 20%. The twenty percent target rate is that which applies in downtown Brooklyn. That's the policy direction that city planning is going in, as you all know. And it, it's really sort of gut-wrenching, in fact, that there's a parking requirement that's forty percent in this part of Manhattan, given, once again, the proximity to mass transit. It's gut-wrenching that twenty blocks to the south, there is no parking requirement, even if you're as far west as York Avenue or First Avenue. Here we have a parking requirement of forty percent. We're going to try to get to, and we're very close to twenty percent. We are not going to be able to get higher than that. And that's because to do more parking in this building is going to compromise our retail. And by squeezing more parking into this building, it means putting, putting parking into the cellar space that's devoted to retail space. We're told by the folks who are looking to do grocery stores and other kinds of retail use here that that, that space is important to them. So if we put parking and we try to get, you know, more parking spaces in there, we're going to compromise that retail space. This is a significant problem for us and for the site. And I say that not lightly because we, we desperately want to have this retail space. It's important in terms of the project's bottom line. It's also important in terms of the community. So once again, to accommodate more parking, to squeeze in more spaces, is going to create an issue in the cellar that's devoted right now to seven thousand square feet or so, devoted to, to the retail space.
What about the other suggestion that the Commissioners had about going back to an elevator and that would be able to free up some spaces?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We've studied two other options.
Okay.
One, the elevator space. That gives us almost no spaces, as it turns out, and it's very expensive to shift to an elevator system. So we have looked at that. We looked at it sort of, you know, the last twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours. And that, we've determined that that's not feasible. Now, there is parking, of course, in the neighborhood. Our quarter-mile analysis shows a fair amount of parking that's available. I recognize this on-street parking, but there's also off-street parking. We would be willing, we don't think the demand is going to be there, but we would be willing if it turns out the demand is there. And we would be perfectly comfortable with this being, if I may be so bold as to say this, perfectly comfortable with it being in your resolution. We would be comfortable with having a requirement on us, if the demand is there, to, to get those spaces and find them off-site. Which is to say, if it turns out, as we move forward with the project, that the demand is higher than the eighteen percent we're showing, Hundred and Twenty-three spaces, we will lease spaces and we'll find a way to get spaces within the quarter-mile that, that's shown on our analysis. So we are willing to do that. We don't, once again, think that, that that's necessary or that, that'll be available. So we've looked at the elevator space, we've looked at trying to do it in the cellar. We're very concerned that the cellar needs to be devoted to retail and we'll, we'll be compromised by putting, by putting parking in there. I, I'm happy to have Jack speak on some of the issues that, that I think, that I raised and that you raised. And Jimmy Kim from Sam Schwartz LLC can talk a little bit more and elaborate on the parking issue.
Well, I just want to understand, I appreciate that you've taken our comments seriously and you're looking for a way to address it. But if your argument is you don't need the spaces, that you anticipate that you're not going to need more than...
We don't think the demand, I'm sorry, yes.
Right. Then I think that, at least in my opinion, I prefer to have some way, if you could present that analysis to us.
Okay.
That would show it. I know you, you're right, you've taken this, you've done the analysis based on, I guess, certain kinds of methodologies.
Right.
They apply, generally speaking, but this is a, this site has other factors that you should take into consideration vis-à-vis the location of mass transit.
Right.
I don't know if it's worthwhile for Sam Schwartz to actually do sort of an alternative analysis. I'm concerned about the question, or one of your suggestions, which is, well, if the demand is there, we'll go and seek it. Because that's kind of in the future and it's very hard for us to enforce. It's almost better for you to go and obtain those spaces through some kind of lease or some understanding with an operator and in the event that you never need them to come back and ask us to release those spaces.
I see.
So, because I don't think, it's, it's hard for us to control it, you know, you'll, we're not going to be able to go and check in the future and say, well, is there demand or not? And it's very hard to document.
Understood.
So the alternative is trying to secure some spaces or some kind of understanding from the operator. We've seen that in other cases. And in the event, which is in the future, if you don't need to lease those spaces, then you can come back and, and change that.
Okay.
Alternatively, I think you could, you could look at, analyze, or redoing the study and see what the numbers plays out. Yes, Commissioner?
Right, because right now your demand, your residential demand is at a hundred and sixty-nine.
Hundred and sixty-nine.
Point five, which is a lot higher than what you're actually presenting. But perhaps in, and your twenty-five percent car ownership is based on census data in the area, but do you, did you also have a study of parking garages and residential developments in the neighborhood? Because that might help to persuade us that eighteen percent is okay if we were to see that the, you know, the amount of spaces leased in other developments is at eighteen percent for residents in that development or lower.
I appreciate that very much. I'm, Jimmy, do you, I'm, I'm afraid that I...
You'll have to come forward.
Come to the microphone, G.
This is Jimmy Kim from Sam Schwartz, Paulson.
Thank you. We have not looked at those comparables, but I think it's a very good point. I think we may also want to look at comparable census tracts that are within transit-rich locations. And again, looking at the downtown Brooklyn parking study, we should take into account that we are in a unique location. And so I think we can sort of fine-tune our analysis rather than just taking the census information at face value. But just getting back to also what Mitch had pointed out, there is a generous supply of on-and-off-street parking in the area. We conducted surveys during a weekday midday as well as the weekday evening hours, which is when residents typically come back to park. That's when the garages open up. And that's consistent with what the findings were of the Brooklyn, the downtown Brooklyn parking study, which sort of provided the trigger for that policy decision. So we are pretty comfortable, given what the supply is, both free parking as well as the parking garage facilities. But again, we can look back and fine-tune our demand analysis.
Right, but also another point that I had made was that your residential peak period is eleven PM to four AM. However, your parking availability study for on-street is ending at nine PM. So we really don't have any, any information that tells us what the availability is exactly when this building supposedly is going to have the greatest demand for space.
Right, and we, and we followed the, the parking supply analysis methodology that's prescribed in SECR and other environmental review documents. Typically, kind of get off, get cut off at the seven PM to nine PM hour. That's, I mean, it's sort of, you know, sort of experientially, that's when, you know, on residential blocks, the parking fills up. You know, if we went back out and surveyed from ten PM to four AM, there's, there would be very minimal turnover during that time period. So I don't think I've ever seen a study where they've done the on-street study in the middle of the night.
So you're saying that the seven to nine sort of captures the, the utilization and that would follow through in the middle of the night?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
While there might not be turnover in the middle of the night, I mean, my personal experience with finding on-street parking is that later it is, the more difficult it is to find. So that would be my pushback against what you would say, what you've just said, is that it certainly is more difficult to find a space at midnight than it is at nine PM. It would kind of be nice to just have an idea of whether or not there is availability at that time.
Alright, I think the, you could take a look at that, but on the other hand, if you revise your study and if you find that in fact you're not going to be relying on, on-street parking, then I guess that issue would go away.
Right, that's, that's one...
Okay, okay. But otherwise, if you feel, because you, if you're relying on that, I mean, I, I understand and maybe I'm, I don't drive, so I don't know the parking situation, but I can understand a seven to nine being a peak because you may still have people who are visiting the area as well as the residents who come back, but, and some of that may be alleviated later on. But why don't you take a look at that if you need to?
We will.
Okay. I understand, at least for me, I had suggested the idea of retail at the ground floor, I mean, lower level being used for parking. And I can understand that the retail is really paying a lot for some of the, the extreme costs on this property. So I understand that you don't want to take that away. In terms of the elevator, Commissioners, do you have any concerns about that and the economics of that?
You'll be documenting why the elevator didn't work?
We can, sure, certainly.
Right, because what you're saying is the cost associated with it goes up, but the number of spaces you actually get.
Apparently, I'm told there are very few spaces, if any, that can be accommodated by switching from the ramp to the elevator scenario.
Okay, so if you can explain that to us.
There are also, also ways, as a practical matter, we can't really show this, of course, in diagrams. And I'm reluctant to say this directly on the record, but as a practical matter, it's remarkable, right, how valets manage to squeeze in spaces. So as a practical matter, I, I think it's fairly clear that the way parking garages operate, I, I don't think there'll be too much of an issue. I'm sort of, it's something that we always keep in the back of our minds, that it's amazing how many spaces can be, can be put into, into garages. I would say on, on the topic of timing and, and the issues that we are grappling with, I know the board is sensitive to this and I, I've tried to make this point and we have over time. And I said at the very beginning that we're very pleased at how quickly this has moved. We are in a very serious time crunch. And I could have William speak to this. I will have William speak to this, if you don't mind. William Wallace from...
Alright, but we can bring you back fairly quickly.
We appreciate that so much, I, I really do. William Wallace IV, Senior Finance Acquisitions Officer of the Continuum Company. I'm a third year, I heard one of your previous speakers speak about being a first-generation New Yorker, third-generation New Yorker. Know that site, know it's been languishing there forever. Autobiographical aside, my father served as your father in Bronx Supreme Court.
I know.
And you know how long, you know how long that, and so we're right now jeopardizing the financing of the project. We have an EB5 raise in China. First question from our investors, do we have the variance? We have capital from Goldman Sachs. First question, do we have the variance? We have retailers ready to sign leases. First question. So any effort you can make to really expedite the consideration, I know you have to be deliberate if I was a former law clerk, I understand totally, but we'd greatly appreciate that so we could just check that box. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I don't know whether it's possible in light of what we need to do, but if we could close the hearing and provide this information and, and have a vote, that would be extraordinarily helpful, but...
And I think extraordinarily difficult for us to do that.
Yeah.
So why don't we move this really quickly? So, so you can move ahead with this, but I think this is just our first hearing.
I understand.
There are some legitimate questions that relate to the analysis that you provided us. So we don't know what's, in fact, you haven't generated that as well. So I have just one other quick question, which, or maybe you could just show us on the plat... And just a little bit confusing to me about the connection to the Second Avenue subway.
Okay.
I know that the plans that we have from, from Langen actually pretty clearly show the Metro North station, but I haven't really fully understood
Okay.
where the Second Avenue subway dovetails with the site.
Okay, back to you.
If you could just put that in a drawing, that'd be good, but, okay, you can explain it to us.
Yeah, just to explain it, yeah, Alan Popple from Langen for the applicant. What it does is it comes down Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street and it will actually go underneath the foundations of the Metro North tracks and it terminates right literally in, to the north of the site on Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street. And then there'll be an overrun that goes another half, halfway down the block.
Okay, so it turns on from Second Avenue and runs along Hundred and Twenty-Fifth?
Right.
And then is it like, it turns southwards or...
You know, well, picture, it starts at Hundred and Twenty-Fifth and it goes east and then turns south to go down Second Avenue. That's, that's what the plans are. I mean, it's not under construction yet, but that's the next phase of construction that's planned. So there'll be a station, station right there and you'll be able to connect to the Metro North station on the elevated platform.
Oh, that's the reason why they're doing that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's a, I didn't realize that. Okay, so is it possible for you, on your site plan, to just show us what, or...
Sure.
Or...
It's in our, it's in one of the drawings in our report. There's a dash, there's a dashed line that shows the, sort of the outline of what the Second Avenue...
That must have been very faint because I couldn't tell. Okay, maybe you could just...
We'll improve it for you.
I think it'd be helpful if we just have one drawing which shows basically both the, the two systems and, and their relationship to the site.
That's fine.
Just like a site plan where you show the Metro North as well as the subway.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
Alright.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay, do you, would you like to submit in a week?
Yes.
Okay, so that's May sixth and we can have the hearing on May twentieth.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Item number twenty-four, calendar number three, twenty-five thirteen BZ, thirty-one seventy, Webster Avenue of the Bronx, Eric Kladnik.
Alright, Webster Avenue?
Yes.
You've called it, right?
Good afternoon, Eric, Eric Kladnik.
Alright, there were...
Couple of questions about the parking.
Yes, there were a couple of questions.
I believe the board had a question about, it's a four-story building and there was a question about the parking, about how it's being waived, I believe, is the question. Is that correct?
What was your methodology for waiving the parking?
Is a requirement of, of one per one thousand square feet for all of the parking in the building. It's a forty thousand square foot building. So, excuse me, the building is less than forty thousand square feet. So that would, it's the waiver provision in section thirty, Article, section thirty-six.
But are you counting...
Less than waive, less than forty.
So wait, so the, is the building overall, the, the square footage of the building is forty thousand?
No, it's well under, it's much less than forty thousand square feet. I'll get the exact amount of the entire building for you. Yes, but it's much less than forty thousand square feet.
Okay. Maybe you confused us because you talked about a waiver of fifteen thousand square feet that's related to...
Excuse me?
The PCE space. I think we were confused by what you wrote in your papers to us.
Well, how so, were you confused? It's, upstairs, the school is exempt.
Okay, what is the total size of this building? Is it really, is it...
I'm going to get you the exact total square footage. It's about twenty-nine thousand square feet, though, and the...
That includes fifteen thousand square feet for the PCE?
Yes.
And the balance of that is for...
The school upstairs, the two schools, the two floors of the schools, floors three and four, and downstairs for the medical use on the first floor.
You know what, I think it'd be helpful, you give us the program, right? The program for this, for each space and just give us the parking requirement.
I'm looking at the plans here and it says sixty-one thousand six hundred square feet.
The entire building is probably including the sub-seller and the cellar.
No, it doesn't.
I know, there's something confusing about what you've said.
There's at least fifteen thousand six hundred square feet per floor.
Mr. Rothgrub represents the building owner.
Thank you, I, I've been involved. The, the school on the upper floors is exempt from any parking requirement, has zero. So all the uses, including the health club, that require parking are less than forty thousand square feet. So there's no parking requirement for the whole building.
Because the forty...
The school is exempt.
But for, so forty thousand square feet divided by...
A thousand.
Thousand gives you how many spaces?
Forty.
So how is, how are you waived? And I thought it says fifty...
Because the school is exempt.
No, no, no.
So there's only about, there's only about twenty-five thousand square feet that counts toward the parking requirement. So that would be twenty-five spaces and therefore it's exempt.
So the building is forty thousand square feet or sixty...
No, the building is well over forty thousand square feet.
What's forty thousand square feet then?
That's just where the waiver kicks in.
Okay, so...
The amount of uses that generate a parking requirement are less than forty thousand square feet.
How much is it?
Well, we can give you a break, though.
Okay, that's what we want to sort of understand.
But the majority of the building is a school which has no parking requirement.
Got it, understood. I think we just wanted to understand that because the way it was written in the papers for the same question was that somehow the PCE generates fifteen spaces and fifteen spaces are waived, but it doesn't talk about anything else.
No, all, all, all of the use, all of the uses within the building generate less than a requirement of forty spaces. generate less than a requirement of 40 spaces.
All right, if you could just show that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rothberg.
All right, there were other questions? Yes, Commissioner?
Right, the TCO lists the second floor as a use group for a gym, a community facility.
Yes. That is currently occupied.
That's why they're coming close.
That's why we're here, to legalize that.
So you will be able to, within the bulk of the building, change that?
You're asking if we have enough floor area? We'll include that in our analysis to show you, when we include the parking analysis.
That you won't be occupying community facility? It's not required for the bulk of the building?
Correct.
Yes.
And then my other question, which didn't have to do with the structure of the building, it had to do with noise concerns, because your uses on the first floor are listed as an urgent care center, a portion of the school, and a supermarket, had to do with whether there was any noise abatement measures in place for free weights, that kind of thing.
The building is very well-built and the school actually has a nice relationship with the gym. They've been working together. There's no impact right now, everything is operating and there's been no complaints. But we can include some notes on the plans, if you would like to indicate that.
The, the gym is in operation now?
The gym is in operation now, yes.
All right, that wasn't clear. This is the first time we're hearing of it. Can you let us know when it started operating?
It began operating, I believe, on March 17th.
Okay.
Since the application's been filed, we'll amend the paperwork to reflect that.
Is the building fully tenanted with the urgent care center and the supermarket?
I, I'm not sure about the supermarket. I know the urgent care is, as well as the, the school upstairs. I'll find out about the supermarket.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Okay, it seems you can get back to us fairly quickly.
We can get back right away, if it would be possible to close the hearing.
I'm not closing this, because it was confusing. And we've just heard it's a legalization. We want you to revise the papers as well.
Okay.
Okay? So May, if you could submit May 6th, we'll continue on May 20th.
Thank you.
Item number 25, calendar number 1-14BZ, 525 West 42nd Street, Manhattan, Loafer Frederick A. Becker.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have one request. We have actually reduced our signage since the plans that we submitted, which were permissible signage. I would just like to tomorrow, submit a reduced signage plan with a reduced analysis, with an addition, a revised analysis. We're going just less signage than we had.
Even better. That seems fine. Any speakers? No speakers? We can close the hearing? Just, you can submit to us tomorrow?
Yeah.
That's fine. And we'll vote this out on May 20th.
Thank you very much.
Motion to close.
Chair Shunivassan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Ali Brown?
Aye.
Item number 26, calendar number 2-14BZ, 555 Sixth Avenue, Manhattan, Loafer Frederick A. Becker.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frederick A. Becker. We attended executive review and the issue about the noise, this, we submitted the noise attenuation measures as part of our original plans. We actually did extent, which, extensive testing on-site. This is not hypothetical.